Well, I think all of the council members are present and so it is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, and it's 7:01 PM and I am calling the meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville to order. Tonight, we are meeting mostly virtually, although I understand there's a couple of people in the council. So Candace will start with roll call.
All right, Jason Arts?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
And Killian? You're muted, Ken. I can see you. There you go.
Good evening.
Good evening. Robin Klein?
Here.
Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Kathy Kopp?
Here.
Okay, tonight, our first agenda items is actually acknowledgement of Lieutenant Bruce Bacalts' 30 years on the Platteville Police Department. And unfortunately, during these Zoom times, we don't often see these people. I did, I saw Josh is, was online. I think he has left. Oh, no, there he is. And Josh believes that Bruce is not in the area, that he's likely on vacation. But I do believe it's worth at least talking about Bruce's career with the city. And so I will read the proclamation at the time. Whereas Bruce Bacalts has faithfully served the City of Platteville since 1990, and whereas Bruce has shown his commitment to the City of Platteville by serving as a police officer, officer-in-chief, sergeant, and lieutenant, serving an entire 30 years. And whereas Bruce has served loyally as a defensive and arrest tactics instructor, as a vehicle contact instructor, and as a member of the Southwest Emergency Response Team, his focus on officer safety and accountability have led to improvements and upgrades that will continue to serve the Platteville community for decades to come. Whereas Bruce has embodied the spirit of public service by faithfully, diligently, and honestly executing his duties and holding himself and his coworkers to high standards. When Bruce showed up at a scene, everyone knew that things were going to be done correctly and everything was going to work out. Whereas Bruce's professional talents have contributed to making Platteville, the Platteville community, a safer and better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I, Barbara Doss, Common Council President, on behalf of the Common Council and city employees, both past and present, do hereby wish to express our sincere appreciation to Bruce for his dedication and service to the city. And my understanding is that his last day of work is when, Adam? Or Josh? Or has he had his last day of work?
He's had, he's had his last day of work. His last day was, I believe, December 11th or 12th.
Okay, all right. Okay. And Josh, my understanding is that you are in that position now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. As we start tonight, it is a new year, and I would like to express some appreciation to our staff for all of they, all of their work during the past year. And I would like to express appreciation for all of those who continue to work on our response to COVID. I know that there are many meetings on a weekly basis with university, with other municipalities, with the county, and with all kinds of folks. And I know that last week, our team, one of, a team was put together to investigate the Broski Center and to look at flow there and how things would move through, to use it as a, it's a potential vaccination center should we need to do that. So thank you for always thinking ahead, always being prepared, and for making sure that we're in a good position as we move forward. All right, the first item on our agenda tonight then is a public hearing on Resolution 2101, a conditional use permit for a communication tower at 90 East Alden Avenue. Joe? You must be here somewhere. Yep, Joe will start with you and his presentation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is a request for a conditional use permit submitted by Tower North Development. They're requesting a permit to allow the construction of a wireless communication tower, 90 East Alden Avenue. It's the Wonder Wash property. So the tower would be located to the rear of the Wonder Wash building, basically between that building and the McGregor Plaza parking lot. So the, the tower itself would be a 150-foot-tall monopole tower, which means it's basically one single steel tower. The closest I can describe it would be the light poles at the Pioneer Stadium or Legion Field, the tall steel tower. No guy wires, just a tower. And instead of the lights on top, they'd have the stadium lights, it's got the antenna array. So in addition to the tower itself, there'll be a fencing enclosure that would include the, the ground equipment that supports that, that tower. So this tower will be owned by Tower North Development, but it'll be leased to Verizon Wireless. And they would be the company that actually has their antennas on that tower for cellular service. So this is going to be constructed as a replacement, as far as Verizon is concerned, for their antennas that are currently located on the city water tower over on Furnace Street. So they initially did an analysis of the current location on the water tower, and their engineer came to the conclusion that the, the water tower was not suitable structurally to accommodate the additional antennas. There are several providers that are on there, but it was not feasible to provide the structural modifications to the tower that would be necessary to accommodate the upgraded equipment. So they began the process of looking for alternative locations. There's a kind of a description of the process that they went through. Basically, they used that tower, water tower location, their current location is kind of the starting point, and then spread out from there, trying to find alternative locations that would meet their needs. And this location was the, the best location that they came up with. There was several requests and discussion for additional information at the Plan Commission meetings. And so they did provide some additional information regarding that process that they followed and some of the alternative locations that they looked at, which I don't believe that information was in your packet the last time. So they did, their engineer provided some maps that kind of indicate the, the coverage that would be provided on some of the other locations that were under consideration in comparison to the water tank and this location. So they looked at the Holiday Inn Express rooftop as being a tall existing structure in that vicinity, same with the Jenner Towers rooftop, and then the comparison to this building or this proposed location. Those additional alternate locations were not deemed suitable for their service coverage. So that led to them looking for the construction of a new tower as proposed. Since they are currently on our existing water tower, they are paying lease payments to the city, goes to the Water and Sewer Department, that comes out to just over $36,000 a year. So when those antennas are no longer on the water tower, that we, the, the city department's, Water and Sewer Department will no longer receive that funding. There was additional information also that was requested at the Plan Commission meetings regarding, you know, other communities that have towers kind of in the central part of the city in similar capacity, similar type structures. So they did provide some information, I included in your packet, some other examples from Rice Lake, Appleton, Brookfield, Merrill, and Shawnee. And if you see those photos, they also have pictures, so it kind of gives you a better example of what this tower is going to look like if you look at those photographs. And then the last thing I included in your pack that wasn't in there last time was the, there was a memo from the Wisconsin Legislative Council back from 2013, when the State of Wisconsin passed some laws that regulated the approval process to be followed for the approval or consideration of the approval for communication towers in Wisconsin. And that dictates what criteria or what conditions, what concerns communities can and cannot use, specifically what we cannot use for criteria to deny requests of this sort. I had previously included the statutes in your packet, but this is a little bit easier to read and provides the, a better description of our limitations on the ability to deny this type of request. So basically, if they go through the process that is dictated by statute and have followed that procedure and are unable to find a different location, that we are extremely limited in our ability to deny a request of this sort. It appears from my review of this application, they've met all the requirements of that application process, and we really don't have any grounds for denial of this application. So based on that, I would recommend approval of the application as submitted. The Plan Commission did consider this, actually at two meetings, they had a December meeting, tabled it, requested additional information, which was provided. And then they, again, at their January meeting, after considerable discussion, it was approved on a five to four vote, or at least a recommendation to approve this conditional use permit. So I don't have anything else to provide. I think we covered some of this stuff last time, but if anybody has any questions, I would be glad to address those.
Okay, Joe, I also believe you sent a couple of documents that were provided since the Plan Commission meeting. One was, so you might want to talk about those, please?
Yeah, thank you. So there was, again, based on the discussion at the, the January Plan Commission meeting, there was some questions about the, basically the liability if there's issues with this tower. So they did provide some information on the insurance that are, will be applied to this property to cover any damages from, that may come out of the tower having some issues. There's also some questions about the ownership structure, because it was Tower North Development and its Centerline Communications, kind of both of those names are included in the application. But, so they've got a corporate disclosure statement. Basically, both of those entities are under common ownership. There's just kind of the operating entity and the ownership entity. And then he also included, again, based, just to further describe some of the comments that he had made at the Plan Commission meeting, some of the, the benefits to the residents or any residents that use cell phone service, the importance of having reliable service. So that did not come through with time to make it in your packet, so I sent that email today. Any other questions?
Okay, this would be just questions on Joe's presentation. So Robin, any question on Joe's presentation? We still have applicant statement and other things to go through. This would be clarification from Joe on anything he said or wrote.
I apologize if I missed it, but you said the Plan Commission, five-four vote, and those who voted against, were there, was there a belief that we could deny it? I mean, what was, I know you can't guess at that reasons, but was there something that we might want to be discussing still? Is it, or was it just a voiced opposition?
Well, I think most of the, the discussion of the, from the members that voted against it were related to, there was a court case in Wisconsin where a community is actually a township that denied a request for a tower. And one of the arguments that was made in that court case was that there, there was going to be some economic hardship, so to speak, to their surrounding property owners based on that tower. And so they were hoping that that would be a, an issue that could be investigated further in this particular case. So there, there was actually a, an attempt to make a motion to modify the motion to approve to require a study to be conducted to essentially guarantee that there would be no economic impact, negative economic impact on the community from this tower. So after some back and forth, that request to amend the motion did not approve, so the main motion to approve passed. So I think that basically was, I guess to sum it up, there was the, the main request or the main concern was the, some of the Plan Commission members thought there might be some economic impact negatively to the surrounding property owners, and they wanted to investigate that further.
Can I make a follow-up? I'm wondering if there are any residential owners that are behind that claim locally, if the neighbors have responded with concerns about economic that.
Um, I've, I've heard directly from two property owners in that area. One was actually in favor of the request, the other one was against it. They, that was one item that they had identified as a concern, mostly, their, their concern was mostly directed at the appearance of the tower and the negative impacts from that, which is one of the issues that we really are not able to use, at least solely as a criteria. And they also identified some concerns about the emissions, the radio frequency, and some health concerns, which is another area that we are not able to use as a justification. I did not hear from anybody else, but I know there was a one neighbor that, I don't remember who it was, that was at the early, the December Plan Commission meeting that recommended or was concerned about the appearance of the tower.
And, and Joe, Piggly Wiggly? Did you receive a letter from Piggly Wiggly?
No, I, I received a phone call from somebody from Piggly Wiggly asking some questions, and their concern was also the appearance. They had some concerns about the easement, basically to get to this tower, they would have to use an existing easement that the Car Wash property has to get to their property. So they weren't sure legally if, if that automatically gave them the right to that. And that's not really the city's issue, that's kind of between the property owners to figure out. And then they were concerned about, you know, liability if there was an issue with the tower that, you know, fell on their building or a customer parking in their parking lot, so to speak. So that was, otherwise they, I mean, I haven't heard from them since then, it seemed like their questions were answered, and then they just pass it on to somebody else within their department.
Okay, that's Robin. Kathy, questions of Joe on his presentation?
Nothing right now, no.
Okay, Eileen?
Questions of Joe?
No questions.
Ken, questions of Joe?
Not on his presentation.
All right.
I brought up my concern last time about the tower itself, so I, I don't believe you said anything about that. I will bring it up later.
Okay.
One person here, there are two people from the company here.
Yep. Isaac?
I have no questions.
And, that's it, right?
Jason.
Jason. Jason, there you are.
The only question I have is kind of referring back to that study that you talked about, Joe. Who would do that study? Would it be done by like a third-party independent, or would it be by the company itself? Like, who would be involved in, in doing that study?
The, the desire of some of the Plan Commission members was to have a independent company that would do the study, a third party. And their desire was to have the applicant pay for that study. So it was a request, I'm, I'm not sure legally that we, we could require them to do that study.
Okay.
And like I said, that, that was part of their desire, but ultimately that amendment to the motion did not pass, so that was not part of the recommendation from the Plan Commission.
Yeah, and I think that's the, that's one of the main points I brought up in the Plan Commission meeting is from a point, that's going to be complicated, because we don't do that with a lot of other conditional use permits. So you're setting a precedent, you know, for the future if you go down that road, which would cause some questionality in regards to, this is due indicated.
So basically, kind of what I'm hearing is that, at this point, this is, we're just going to be going through the motions in terms of a vote. There's really nothing we can, like, contest or, or do, or?
Well, like I mentioned, you know, I don't see any criteria that are really on the table from a legal standpoint that we can use as a justification for not approving this request.
Okay.
I mean, that's my opinion. I, I, I think, you know, that, that court case has limited application, I believe, in, in our situation, because, you know, this is a commercial property surrounded by other commercial properties. In that particular case, it was a property that was owned residential, only rural residential and agricultural open space uses were the only other uses in that township in that vicinity. So it was kind of introducing a commercial use into a residential area, and that kind of opened the door for the, the township to say, hey, that this, that this is not the proper use of that location. And I, I don't think we could really make that argument. So it limits our ability to use that same, that same case.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the second part of a public hearing then is the applicant statement. And so Pete, are you the one that's going to do that tonight, or where do we stand?
Sure, I can lead in.
Why don't you introduce yourself to the council?
I will, thank you, President Doss. Hi, everybody, my name is Peter Schau. I am the agent for the applicants, prepared the application and, and presented it at the Planning Commission, and I'm here to do the same tonight. Also on the call, I have Jake Remington, he's legal counsel for the applicants. I invited Jake as, as, you know, some of the questions and topics of discussion last week revolved around some, some legal things like the EcoSite's case, which you've been discussing, and there was some of the other elements. So Jake's a good resource available to us if some of those questions come up again that he can potentially add in. So with that, I will, I think I'll just kind of talk a little bit about the app to start. I won't rehash everything, but just kind of using cues that came off our Planning Commission discussion, maybe fill in a couple of the, a little bit more of the background that got us here, which I think the other council members that were at the Planning Commission might find beneficial. So as Joe touched on, Verizon has been serving Platteville with, I think, three other companies from your water tower since 1999. It's a center of site, center of town location, which not only provides the signal, but also it allows Verizon to manage traffic over the whole population kind of equally. By way of background, wireless macro facilities like this one are made up of three sectors. If you can imagine almost a peace sign, like a, a circle divided in three equally. Each sector sends out for 360-degree coverage around a cell site, the signal, and, and the users communicate back through that. What's important to understand about that is each sector can handle an equal, handle an equal amount of traffic. So if you have a user population, like a, like a city center, and you have the, the macro site in the middle of it, it allows you to spread that traffic to everybody around. If you, the farther you move away from that user population, then you start relying on a single sector, which greatly diminishes the amount of traffic that that site can, can handle. So as time has evolved, Verizon, over the years, like the other companies, is often have to modify the equipment they have at their facilities to keep up with the demand and the technologies. So in 2018, I believe it was, they came in and they had a, some equipment they needed to add to that site to, to keep it operational and be able to serve their local network. As, as I touched on, the current, the current state of the structural capacity to hold this type of equipment on that water tower was at its maximum level. So, you know, like the straw that broke the camel's back, they couldn't add a, any greater loading to the tank and make it work. So they, their structural engineers reviewed this, the, the tank and the mounting methods, realized that they were maxed out. They also then first looked to see if they could be modified. Could you reinforce some? Is there anything else you could do? And it was, it was determined that that wasn't feasible. And also, they would have looked at, could they, you know, put together any other sort of loading design that would, that wouldn't add loading? Is there any other types of equipment they could use that would, that would allow them to do that physically, that, that wouldn't cause them to be over the structural capacity, which was not possible? Once that occurred, we discussed this with the Department of Public Works and brought it to their attention. And usually our first and cleanest solution would be to see if the city would like to, you know, put up a tower structure close to that monopole or the existing water tower. This is, this has happened before. And, you know, we could have, you could have a structure, it's a, it's a good clustering technique where you would have two tall structures close together. It saves, you know, it preserves the location that Verizon has used for 20 years as a, as from an engineering design like we just described, and move them over. Unfortunately for the city, you don't have a lot of land there, and it was determined that, you know, they couldn't sacrifice the land for the long-term plan. At some point, that tower, water tower would need to be replaced, and the only available place you could put a communications tower there would be in a spot where they would need to build a new water tower before they brought the old one offline. So with that in hand, we started to look for alternative locations. In the packet, part of the RF engineer's sworn statement, you know, which is one of the criteria of the, of the law that Joe referenced that we must provide, it is, talks about a search ring, and that's how this works. So as this was an established location, the, the need for Verizon Wireless was to replicate it as closely as possible. So the center of that search area is the existing site, and then, and then what they do is they, they need a spot in that search area. Unfortunately, as Joe touched on, due to the zoning, the inventory of property in the city and a couple other issues, there's, you have a couple historic districts downtown that would conflict with a, like a new tower site or potentially communication antennas on a, on different type, different types of structures, that really limited what would be available. There was really nothing available in the search ring. We did look at some of the lower rooftops, kind of at a cursory level, did some modeling upfront, which we explained at the Planning Commission, and they determined that there, you know, there's not a lot of high buildings down there. They, they ran them through their models and, and determined they wouldn't work. Besides those structures, there are some existing structures a little outside of town that couldn't be considered, and we did touch on those in the app, just assuming they would, they would draw the curiosity too. So in the application, we wanted to give you a good background of, you know, of how we got to where we were. So in trying to still meet the needs and get as close as a search ring, the Wonder Wash property was the, was the one we ended up at for a couple different reasons. A, it was in a geographic area that offered a height that could still provide an engineering service to the, to the network that was acceptable to Verizon Wireless. Number two, we had a landlord that was willing to lease us space. And, and also, we had a site that was constructable. There was another property that we touched on, the supplemental materials, the Village Bikesmith property. You know, that site would have required like a demo, demolishing the building and a lot of additional site prep that, that is typically excessive and kind of prohibitive in our industry. So that's kind of how we got to where we were. You know, we had the need, we still have the need, and we're trying to replicate it as best we can. Verizon Wireless, like I said, our, our methods are to look at every existing structure. So, you know, building a tower is the, the last option, and that's also kind of the requirement of the, of the state law. And it's basically the practice, you know, kind of accepted by the industry and as well as, you know, I guess planners for the last 20 years. So that was kind of a focal point of the discussions at the meeting. I, I didn't want to just kind of really fill that in comprehensively, assuming that you would have the same curiosities. And that's about it. Otherwise, I think Joe's kind of summarized it pretty good, you know, about the characteristics of the site. It is a 145-foot-tall tower on top of steel, there is a five-foot lightning rod on top that gets it to the overall 150-foot height. We do like the location, we think it's, it's common. the location. We think it's, it's common. Some of the information that we provided you, I think demonstrates the compatibility in this type of zoning environment. You know, you have a, your, one of your arterial roads there that come into town, which are typically fronted by like service retail, commercial uses. You have a Quaker gas station. You have the, obviously the Piggly Wiggly. You have a Wonder Wash. We're in the rear in the yard of the Wonder Wash. We think that the, you know, the, the parking lot for the Piggly Wiggly has got a retaining wall there, which will help, you know, kind of obscure it from that side. At least the base station, you know, towers do stick up, they are visible. But then towards the front, you have the Wonder Wash plus the bays. A lot of the uses that could potentially, you know, impact surrounding community, we think are already enveloped. You know, we have with the, the commercial operations there, you know, this, this tower, there's noise with the Piggly Wiggly and the, the loading docks right there. You have vacuums at the Wonder Wash. You have traffic coming in and out of that plaza. So we, we do think that, you know, any potential impact that would, that would come is already, is already more or less there. You know, towers, again, they do stick up. They, it's aligned to site technology. And conceptually speaking, your phone needs to see, your device needs to see that tower. Anytime you put physical obstructions in between it, whether it's trees, buildings, topography that diminishes the signal. So they, for us to, to have a working network, we, I guess at some level, need to see the device and the people around there need to see the, the structure that's supporting the antennas. So with all that said, I could answer any questions or how President Dowse, turn it back over to you. Do you want to kind of direct the next part of the meeting? I think you're on mute.
Thank you. I put myself on mute, so I didn't cough in, everybody. Thank you, Pete. Robin, you have questions of the applicant?
I think I have two. Probably the shorter one is the mention of noise. So is there a sort of residual noise that you can hear from the tower? Or are you just talking about a truck coming in and servicing the site? Or what sort of noise are you referring?
They don't really, the towers don't generate any noise. The, the noise that you might hear, the base station equipment. So a communications facility like this, you'll have antennas up at the top of the structure, which are connected by, you know, fiber or hybrid or coaxial cable to a base station. At the base station, the ground is computerized equipment. And it also, Verizon utilizes cabinets and they have like heating air conditioning packs on them to keep the, the, the equipment operated at the proper temperature. There might be some noise on those cabinets, very, you know, minimal noise coming off those for air conditioning and whatnot. The, and the site will also have a backup generator, which would only be used if there was a commercial power outage to the area. And, and so it wouldn't be a constant thing. But if, if there was a storm or something came through and there was a power outage where, you know, the site lost power, the generator would be there in those emergency situations to support it. But other than that, day to day, you won't hear any measurable noise off the facility.
Thank you. The other question, maybe it's Howard's area, but in case you're able to speak to it. When you leave the existing location, is there something in place that addresses any residual damage or something that might, just thinking, I don't know exactly what's mounted, right? But is that part of the initial contract? Or is there something that we might be looking at with the current tower and any issues that will result as they leave?
I'll take that one. There, we have individual lease agreements with the different carriers, including Verizon. And like most, like most lease type agreements, we also have a clause regarding, you know, return it to the original condition except for fair wear and tear. So, so they would need to, you know, when they remove the equipment, if they scrape the paint or do something like that, they would have to repair that. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's all. So I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Kathy, questions of the applicant?
No, no questions.
Eileen.
Just one question. I know that Verizon is the initial server that will be using this antenna. Is there, do you anticipate other uses? I'm just trying to get some idea of how many antennas will actually be on the tower potentially?
The tower is going to be designed for up to four companies at least, which is just a standard kind of a design loading that, that Centerline will use for any site. There's no other companies that I'm aware of at this moment that would have a need for it, but it will just be designed to be available should they, should someone else, whether it's wireless, like a wireless company like US Cellular, AT&amp;T, you know, Sprint, you know, could be for other applications as well that, that maybe aren't as commercial or as known, but, you know, other communications equipment.
Thank you.
Okay, Ken, questions of the applicant?
Yes, I'm mainly interested in talking about, asking about the tower. First of all, excuse me, my question is, what wind velocity, velocities can the tower withstand? What winds?
Okay, is there other questions? Or is that just your first one?
That's my first one.
Okay. Well, the towers are designed, and there's a letter, engineering letter in there. I don't know if you had a chance to review that, Ken?
There's a letter I read last time, zero, was it zero flat area or something like this, that the tower was supposed to collapse within that area? Is that correct?
Yes. And let me get that letter. I'm sorry. Let me just try to get to it so I can.
I looked for it today and I couldn't find the page, but I'd read it before. So I want to know the wind velocity that this tower is built for. Do they have wind velocities for tornadoes and wind velocities for straight line winds?
Designed for a basic wind speed of 108 miles per hour.
Thank you. Thank you.
108 miles per hour.
Yeah, let me, let me touch on that too, Ken. So there's a, the letter that you find in there from Sabre Industries, you know, the, the wind velocity that's described, it's kind of representative of an engineering standard. So, you know, the industry is regulated by engineering standards that they must meet to be considered acceptable in the, in certain geographic areas and certain that, that have weather conditions. So, you know, towers that are designed in, you know, say, the Gulf Coast to, to the northern states all have different criteria they must meet depending on the location. So these towers to, you know, to, I guess, answer question number one, monopoles are the strongest type of towers. They, they're a shorter tower, relatively speaking. They are very thick and at the base. And as they go up, they taper up. And they, they don't have a lot of drag because they are a pole. So in the northern states, as it touches on, not only is it, is it contemplated that can handle, you know, basic wind speeds in excess of, you know, gale force winds 100 miles per hour plus ice loading, but they're, they're designed under those standards to, to essentially meet or exceed, you know, what they would expect to see in this, this area. The, the point of the letter is, you know, to, to assure the community that they're, that the tower in the event of failure, however unlikely, that it would, the tower is designed to stay in place. So what they essentially do to do that is they, they, they factor in certain stress points where should this tower, should you have a weather event, which, you know, as, you know, as unlikely as it could be, we've all seen them, where you had a high winds or whatever that could potentially lead to collapse of the tower. The tower wouldn't collapse. It's designed just basically to bend over. And that's typically, you know, it would be exceptionally rare. I don't know of any examples off the top of my head or first person of a monopole tower that's failed, but they are, they, they wouldn't fall over. They would typically just kind of bow.
They bend over, so.
Slightly, yeah.
Information, do they bend typically first at the middle?
The upper half, yes. It would be in the upper half and they would kind of, they would kind of kink a little bit. That's typically what, what the, what an engineer would expect. The one thing that's tough in answering this question and the, and the, and the failure letter, and I think Howard can maybe, with his, with his background, can probably, I guess, opine as well. It's hard to ask an engineer how, how their tower is going to fail or their water tank or their bridge. And though, most engineers would tell you, we don't design anything to fail. So because of concerns of zoning and things like this, we often ask them to, to, you know, say, well, how's your, you know, how's your site going to fail? So it's a little, I think, I always find it a little awkward, you know, explaining, you know, how they address that.
Well, so far I heard, I think the number 120 miles per hour.
Yeah.
Okay, 120 miles per hour, you know, that's, that's a speed, that's a wind speed that we could easily attain here. In 2014, I was in a tornado. We were in a tornado in my area and we were over 100 miles per hour. And some buildings, one building blew away. So that I have that as a memory. Also in 1965, I witnessed that Love of Texas Stadium Towers that were designed to, to stay up, I believe, 120, 125 miles an hour, they were blown over and they collapsed on cars and so forth. So I witnessed that. So that to me, my concern as far as the tipping over is that you're going to have cars nearby, you're going to have people possibly nearby, you're going to have a Wonder Wash nearby. So that there is this chance for a damage to take place. So 120 miles per hour, I mean, that's a lot of force on a tower. I mean, if you figure that out, that's 176 feet per second. That's the wind is blowing against that tower. So that's a lot of force through the wind. So this is my concern about this, this tower as far as the safety of it and it's falling over. I'll go back to the example of the tornado in our area 2014. There was no warning of the tornado. I was sitting in my kitchen and within a couple of seconds, the tornado had knocked down my chimney, tree, et cetera, et cetera. So that's my concern about this tower. Well, thank you for now.
Okay, Isaac, questions of the applicant?
No questions.
Jason?
Um, the one question that I have is just if this is guaranteed to improve the cell coverage in the area. I know that that's been a concern with some providers. And I didn't know if providing this new tower would, would improve that.
Well, the, for Verizon, it's necessary to improve their service and, and really improve it by keeping up with the demand. So they needed, the, the reason we're here, like I said, is they needed to modify the equipment to, on the tower to install new technologies about two years ago and equipment to support the, the user traffic that they already have and that they, and that's, that's ever growing. So in that regard, yes, that's the whole purpose of it is to, I guess, improve it by keeping up with it. And it will also allow for the future, I guess, you know, if we go back 10 years or 15 years ago before they invented the smartphone, a lot of equipment never changed. And since that time, we've modified sites two to three different times to just keep up with the ever evolving technology. So in the communication tower itself will, will have the structural capacity and the ability for them to continue to do that.
Jason, are you good now? Okay. All right. The next part of the public hearing would be public statements in favor of this. And I believe it's likely that I have one, at least one person in the audience who wants to speak in favor. Brian Loffenberg, I'm assuming that is why you're here, that you would like to speak in favor.
Yeah, that is correct. I am Brian Loffenberg and I live at 585 Brown Tree Avenue, which is just a couple of blocks away from this site. I am also the owner of the Wonder Wash. So I do have a vested interest both as the business owner and as a resident in the neighborhood. I also own some residential rental properties in the area as well. When I was talking with the applicant and trying to decide whether or not to allow this site to move forward, my main consideration is the fact that the city does have a need for improvements to their communications. And whatever site we can have that would best supply that service and, and to the city, I feel is what's needed. And I'm sure as the council members know that especially this last year, with the increased use, there has been a problem in the city with our communications infrastructure. So I feel like, based on what I've heard, this is the best location for that new tower to provide the service that we need.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I don't believe I have anybody else that I know of on this, in this Zoom meeting that is here to speak in favor. Adam, are the people in the, or Jody, are the people in the council chamber here to speak in favor?
No.
Okay. And anybody else here to speak in favor of the tower? Okay, then the next part of the public statements against. So if we have anybody here who is speaking against, please come to the, come to a microphone, appears. And Adam, make sure they give their name.
Go.
Hello, my name is Gloria Shaver and I live at 535 Brown Tree, just a couple houses away from Brian Loffenberg. And I am here to state that I am against, or I listened to all the presentations and that. I see the necessity. My big issue is the location. It's so close to residential houses where people have to live. And it was just briefly touched on by another resident, or the health issues. Nobody seems to be concerned of how this is going to affect the permanent residents that are living basically right underneath this tower. I have a little statement here that I did up. There was things on aesthetics and so on, which I understand don't make any difference right now. The big thing, like I said, for me personally, is health. And as research is still ongoing on effects of cell towers on our health, if any, I have fourth stage ovarian cancer and have been battling this for over five years. My oncologist informs me I will, I will always have it, no remission. yearly chemotherapy treatments keep it reduced, but will the waves emitted from this cell tower affect my cancer? Will it accelerate it or interfere with effectiveness of the chemotherapy? No one knows at this time. Firstly, I am unwilling to take that risk. I've been able to fight it so far. Do not want to have the risk of something happening that is detrimental to my health and shortens my lifespan after coming this far. I'm sure there are others within the area of this tower that have compromised health issues who would be affected also and are concerned. We are within a block of the location and would see the heaviest dose, so to speak, of whatever it admits. I'm sure that we need this. Like I said, it's just my concern that there should be someplace out of town on the edge, like out by the industrial park or someplace, that this can go up and still be just as effective and not affect so many residents. Because like I said, we have no idea what these, unless somebody can answer that, what these waves that are emitted are going to do for our health.
Okay, we will, and your name is Gloria?
Yes. Yes, Gloria Schaefer.
Okay, Gloria, we will talk about addressing that after, during the council discussion, okay? The half is, okay, all right, is there anyone else in the council?
There is, but that's the only one speaking, so we're good.
Okay, so you have somebody else that you don't want to talk? So are there any others on the, on the Zoom call here that are here to speak against this tower? Okay, and then the next part would be public statements in general. Anybody who just wants to make a general statement about cell, and about this one? Okay, then we're to council discussion. So council people, it's time for discussion. I'll start by saying, yes, the Plan Commission forwarded this to you on a 5-4 vote. It was the first time I, as council president and chair of the Plan Commission, had to vote. I will say I'm not particularly happy about this tower, but having read all of the information about why we can't deny it, I just don't see any way that, any, any objection that we can make. Ms. Schaefer talked about the health aspect. I believe in this, it says, in the reasons that you cannot, the city may not do any of the following. Prohibit, where is it? There's one about enact or enforce an ordinance related to radio frequency signal street strength or the adequacy of mobile service quality. I'm interpreting that, Joe, to mean that we really can't talk about the signal strength as it relates to health. Is that true?
Correct. There's also a, a federal law that applies to this situation as well. 47 U.S. Code 332-7B4, I summarized, no local government may regulate personal wireless facilities based on effects of radio frequency emissions. So essentially, as long as they get FCC approval for that signal, that they're deemed to be in compliance and we cannot use that concern as justification for denial.
Okay, so Ms. Schaefer, I'm glad that you brought this up. Because I do, unfortunately, I feel that the law of our state and of our federal government probably prohibits us from, as I said, my discussion is here. I wasn't particularly in favor of this for a number of reasons, but it's hard for me to figure out how we can deny it. Robin, discussion?
Um, I feel like this is going to come off calloused and I don't mean it to be insensitive to the people whose neighborhood is going to be affected, but it is currently in a residential neighborhood, correct? Is this like the Market Street Water Tower that we're talking about? So I feel we're exchanging, if this is a health benefit conversation, one neighborhood for another, but has already been said, we can't really discuss that anyhow. But I guess that's the only response to that, I really feel for Gloria, for sure. And this is a tough decision when considering personal cases, sorry.
Any other discussion about this tower? Because eventually we're going to close this public hearing. Anything else you want to say? Robin?
No.
Kathy?
Oh, sorry, didn't know it was me. Um, a couple of things. Um, I totally understand the need to, for the upgrade. Um, Robin, maybe to your point about treating one neighborhood, residential area to another, is it might make a difference if it was in the current location and upgraded to the max, that all the changes that they're, that they're going to be doing, it's not just the height. Um, but I do, I understand the need for good cellphone use. Um, I am very disappointed that it, the, that the choice location is in our downtown and so very high profile. Um, and, um, the, I, I think, um, that, I, I want to go on record as saying that I think our state and federal legislators need to relook at these laws, the ordinances that they impose. If they, um, there needs to be, um, some way of, of people like the Schaefers to have, I mean, that they've lived at their home for years and years and years. And I, I just don't think that's fair, that they don't have a voice to challenge that. Um, and then, has there been, I think we, that this came up at our last meeting, has there been any other discussion about the other tenants that are currently on the water tower?
Adam?
No, we have not received anything from the other tenants that they're looking to relocate at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, Kathy, because this does result in $37,000 that the residents of Flatbowl are now going to have to pay because of the loss of revenue. So it does require, it does result in a loss. You know, probably as well as a gain, but it does result in a loss because it has a loss to our water and sewer.
Yeah. That, that's all I had, Barb.
Okay, thank you. Eileen, anything?
You're breaking up a little bit, Barbara, I'm sorry, did you, did you call me? Okay, all right. Um, for those of, the people who are listening in and, including the Schaefers, if you go onto the city website, you will see the packet for this council meeting. And the state law lists 23 different reasons why we cannot prohibit this tower being placed where it is being placed. I don't fault the company who's looking to put up this tower. I don't fault the Verizon for wanting to make sure they have great coverage. I do agree that the state government needs to give some kind of local control back to local municipalities because this tower at 150 feet in our downtown, after we have really made an effort to make our downtown more and more attractive, I'm sorry, but this tower is not going to add to that at all. So I'm very disappointed, but again, I agree with Joe's assessment. And I cannot put it, the city in a position where we challenge this, where we would probably end up failing in court. And that would be taxpayers' money that we would be using to defend that case. So I'm not happy about the location. I understand the perspective of Verizon and the company that's building the tower. I'm just unhappy.
Thank you.
A question I have, maybe it's been answered already, but what is going to be the color, the color of this tower over the whole length of the tower? Is it going to be silver or is it going to be rust, like the Mineral Point, the water tower, a rusty? What's, what's going to be the color? Is it going to be a painted color? What's, what's the color?
Be, can you color what color?
From the standpoint, does it blend in to any of the neighborhood?
Yes, I can, it's, these towers, they come out in a galvanized, kind of brushed finish, so they, they're not reflective, but it would be kind of a gray, a gray, a dull gray steel color.
And do they have to be periodically painted or is this a?
No, they're not painted. Um, they don't, they don't, they're rust resistant because they're galvanized and they, and it's just kind of, like I said, like a, like a light gray.
Okay.
Okay.
All comments or questions?
Jason?
Nothing additional, just want to reiterate a lot of what had already been said in terms of just the frustration and, and all that, so.
Robin, you said you had another question?
I do, thanks. Um, apologizing to Brian, but I need to ask, what, how do we assess taxes to the improvement to his property now with a tower on there? Is there some income that will come back to the city by way of his improvement to his property?
Joe?
I, I don't know what that amount would be, but it is an improvement on private property, so there would be some tax implications from that, but I, I don't know how to put a number on that. We'd have to get that from the appraiser.
I'd suggest it would be very small. Brian, have you investigated that?
Uh, like Joe said, that'll be whatever the appraiser comes in at, I'm not sure what it would be.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was any sort of precedent for that type of structure somewhere, some, but maybe not in our city. I don't.
Yeah, not, not in Flatbowl.
I would say you could look and you're going to find that there's little, if any. Maybe just for the building that was put on, but other, what, other than that, little or none. Again, I would say, I, I agree, this is, to put this where we have made concerted effort and made concerted investment, is really sad that we have no local ability to do much of anything. So I would take a motion, since everybody's spoken, to close the public hearing.
Barb, I would move to close the public hearing?
Okay.
We have a motion by Eileen and a second by Ken to close the public hearing. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the public hearing is closed and this is the time for common council action, if any.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 21-01, approving the conditional use permit to allow the, excuse me, the communication tower at 90 East Alden Avenue.
We have a motion.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac with a second by Jason. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Boss?
Reluctantly, yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Pop?
Very reluctantly, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, let us move ahead then to consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate if you want separate action on any of the items. We have council minutes from December 8th and December 15th. We have payment of bills, we have financial reports for December, appointments to boards and commissioners, and tonight I have none, but I am incredibly hopeful that by the second meeting of this month, January 26th, I, we will have additional applicants for our Hyde Committee, our task force in, on inclusion, diversity and equity. Right now, we have four people who have expressed interest. Our goal has been 10 people, but I will make appointments to that commissioner, that task force on the January 26th meeting. So I would encourage any and all of you to think about people who might serve, to give them a call, to nudge them, to say, have you considered? Please make application. It's not real hard, it's just kind of a quick letter that says, hey, listen, I'm interested and this is kind of why, and this is kind of what I bring to the table. So please, let's see if we can get one, at, at least two, if not three more for that group by the end of the month, in the next two weeks. Uh, licenses, we have one and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol as in your packet and a street closing permit for North Bonson Street from Irving Place to Market Street and East Minhamole from Bonson to North Fourth for the Farmer's Market, May 1st through October 30th. And Jenna Phillips, thank you very much for getting this filed early and also for joining us tonight. So do I hear a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent, Ken.
Okay, we have Ken and Jason who are moving and seconding to approve the consent calendar as presented. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, citizens' comments, observations and opinions. Um, in the audience, uh, I don't, Jenna, did you want to make a comment? Her microphone has now been muted again, so I'm going to assume that that was a no. And Christina, I assume you're here for sidewalks. Uh, Dan, I assume you're here for something else on the agenda. So I think we're good to start through our reports. We have reports in the packet tonight from the Housing Authority Board. Ken?
No addition.
From the Plan Commission, me and Isaac, I have nothing.
Nothing.
Uh, from Water and Sewer, I have nothing. Ken or Isaac, do you have anything?
No additions.
Airport Commission, Kathy?
Nothing more.
Library Board, Robin?
Nothing to add.
Do we have, is there a reopening or not? Did you get, did the board meet?
Yeah, we decided to wait till February for a change in status.
Okay. Solid Waste and Recycle Task Force, Robin?
Nothing to add.
Board of Appeal Zoning, Isaac?
Nothing to add.
Uh, Community Safe Right Routes, Jason?
Um, nothing to add.
Parks, Forestry and Recreation, Jason?
Nothing to add.
And Police and Fire Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to add.
Boy, we got a lot of meeting notes in this one. Okay, other reports that were in your packet were the Water and Sewer Financial Reports, the Airport Financial Report and the Department Progress Reports. Any questions on any of those?
I have a couple of small questions.
Okay.
City Manager, um, terminology, it says you interviewed and hired a city controller. Now who did that replace? That replacement of Barb Johnson?
Correct.
Gains the title?
Yes, so the title was changed from Financial Operations Manager to Controller as that is kind of the new, the new title that the majority of those particular positions are being called as a controller. So, kind of sticking with the times and.
And on the second page here, it says, and I couldn't find it in the email, council meeting on January 13th as far as LGBTQ training session.
Yes, so I'll be giving you an update on that when we get to the inclusivity, diversity and equity update.
Is that going to be a meeting tomorrow?
That is for, it's the staff, primarily the department heads. The council was invited to attend if you would like, but otherwise the same presentation will be occurring on the 26th as a work session for the council.
So it's not for the council?
Correct.
It says you're in the common council, so it had me worried there.
You're, you're invited if you want, but we, we wanted to make sure that the same presentation is occurring on the 26th as well, so.
Because I wanted to go to Howard's meeting tomorrow night. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on Department Progress Reports? Otherwise, we're going to start down through the agenda action items, the first of which is 2102, Flatbowl Functional Classification of Streets. Howard?
Thank you. Um, we discussed this last time, we had.
Thank you. We discussed this last time. We have representative from DOT for any questions that you may have. Periodically, the DOT does a map with functional classifications of streets, interstate highways, we have none, principal arterials, minor arterials, collectors, and local roads. If you look at the map, principal arterials are in red, minor arterials are in green, collectors are in kind of a yellow mustard kind of a color, local roads are the other ones kind of a grayed out. We had some issues initially regarding Milton Longhorn Drive, but those have been resolved. The university does not wish to pursue making that a public street at this time so that, so it cannot be considered one of these categories. There was a question that has come up since the last meeting regarding State Highway 80, Water Street, north of Pitt Street. In the 2005 classification, it was listed as a principal arterial in red, and in this version, it's listed as a minor arterial in green. Now, as a state highway, we get, we receive connecting road, connecting highway aid money every year for maintaining the state highway through the city. The change in that functional classification does not increase or decrease our aid formula for that street. It's based on DOT criteria, whether it's major or a minor arterial, and because it went from a major to a minor arterial, it does not change its eligibility for different types of federal aids. It's, it's just a classification difference. They've classified the rural section north of the city as a minor arterial, and based on the land use down to Pitt Street, it made more sense that this section also be considered a minor arterial. If Francis has any comments on that, he can, he can add those in, but I believe that they're fair. We have minor additions and changes since 2015 that makes sense based on the land use and the traffic patterns in Platteville, and so I'm recommending that we approve this.
Francis?
Yes, is there any questions?
Do you want to speak to that Highway 80 from Pitt Street to the north edge of town and how it, I mean, there's a brand-new subdivision back there with I don't know how many residents, so it just seems a bit peculiar that that would have been changed.
So we get, we get that question a lot. Best way to describe it is, is that functional classes are reviewed on a routine basis. Most of the time, it's initiated by the DOT due to census data, you know, changing in urban boundaries, different things like that. But a change in functional class can be requested by the municipality themselves. And basically, why we do that is because we can't forecast based upon a development or something going in. You guys put together land use plans and so on and so forth, and hey, we're expecting by 2025, this new subdivision's going to go in, and it's going to generate 10,000 vehicles. Well, we don't want to build a road on a, on a, on a forecast. I guess that's the best way to put it. And so the numbers that are there in the fork and the functional class designations that are on those, on the map and on the change list are based upon the conditions that were presented in those special counts. Howard actually requested that we change some of those counts because of when they were done, not during UW in session timeframe. So we, and we did that to make sure that we were getting a more, the most reflective situation. The other thing that is being considered, especially in your case here, we're looking at the county as a whole as an update two for the rural. And so if you're looking at the map specifically, you'll notice that because we're working on, we generally work from the urban areas out, but we always want to make sure we or correlate the two together. In the top left corner on Highway 81, you'll notice that we're actually upgrading that section of 81 on your project from a minor arterial to a principal arterial because in the rural section, you'll notice there's a note that says county map will be upgraded to the, a principal arterial also, which I think is kind of what Howard was alluding to, you know, on the Highway 80 section, the rural section there is staying a minor arterial based upon all the counts and so on and so forth. So that's another thing that we take, keep in mind because we want it to be consistent from rural to urban. Don't want it to, let's face it, the road doesn't change at the rural or urban boundaries unless there's a street there. In this case, we don't have that street, so.
So Francis, do I understand you to say then that if we wanted to request a change from Walnut Dell Road to Pitt Street or in that Highway 80, it would be us, up to us to request it? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
You had said that there's a new development going in?
That it's there.
Oh, so the new development, if it's, if it's not new, these counts were taken last year, right?
Well, not last year, 2019.
19, 2019. So if that development isn't new since 2019, the traffic counts are generally reflective of that. Best example, I've got Wisconsin Dells High School, is they're building a brand-new Dells High School. That's going to change where the traffic come from and goes in that area, and we're going to have to come back and revisit that. And they wanted us to change it in advance of the high school being built. We just can't do that. So they'll come back to us probably in a year or two when they've got trafficked it to support that change. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry, misunderstood a little bit.
Yep, I think that does. So were there other changes in changing collectors to local streets or local streets to collectors?
Yes. There, there's actually a table in here. There are a list of 18 streets that had changes, and if you, if you can see it, if you can zoom in enough on each of those, you can see what the actual changes are. Now, a minus on one, for example, the number one here is Business 151. What it shows is it adds three and a half miles as a principal arterial, and then in the next column, it subtracts three and a half miles as, as a minor arterial. So that, that one's actually an upgrade from minor to principal arterial, and then the reverse is true for the next one, which is that Water Street that we've been talking about. It went, it minus 1.3 miles of principle and added that same amount as a major arterial. And so if you look at the columns, it will tell you which ones went from which category to the next.
To kind of help summarize that, I guess, one thing that always comes into play here is, is that the functional classifications of your roadways, as long as they're collector and above, make those roadways eligible for federal STP block grant funding. So really, the only ones that, as I say, become a concern, because functional class outside of that is just how does that roadway function within the overall, you know, system? You've got a couple of them that go from collector to a local street, the Milton Longhorn Drive, so that one would no longer be eligible. But to be honest with you, it shouldn't have been anyways because it's a private road, so that was one that, that came off. Looking through the rest of the list here, West Madison Street went from a collector to a local, but the ADT is only 130 cars per day. That's probably lower than some of your other local streets. So, and that's due to generally probably shifting in traffic and where destinations are and stuff like that. The other ones that are on there is North Second Street and Fourth Street, both in the downtown area. ADTs there dropped to 280 and 330 respectively. West Gridley, at the west end of town there, must be because of a couple of different ways you can kind of go through there, that ADT dropped to 610. And all the other ones were either upgrades to a collector or just shuffling them around from collector, minor arterial, major arterial, and principal arterial, which all of those are eligible for federal funding and those funding sources. So from that perspective, just those, I guess there's five, I think I mentioned, that are actually downgraded to a local, where previously they would have been eligible for that funding.
And so it does reduce, this designation does reduce our funding opportunity.
So the net change is you added 242 of principal, 2.42 miles of principal arterial. You removed 0.68 miles of minor arterial. You reduced 2.45 miles of collector. Yep, and 0.71 increase of locals. So there was a slight decrease. I'd have to add those up to be a net, but it looks approximately 0.7 mile, give or take.
0.71 miles.
0.71 miles are now less eligible than before.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it's actually less than that, Howard, because you have one section that was a local that moved up to collector. But like I said, it's about 0.7, give or take. It's a little less minor.
Okay, so there was more movement into collector than into local, which is good for us.
You lost 2.45 net for collector. But you added 2.42 of principal arterial, which is a higher function, which is probably relevant to the, the west side, or sorry, the east side developments.
Okay. All right. I think, questions, Robin?
Did you say that the study was done when the students were not in town, and what is the advantage to that? And that would notably be West Madison impact then as well?
The counts were done, I think they were done in June, by, Howard requested us to recount. I want to see, there's about 12 sites. Is that somewhere right, Howard?
Yeah. They initially did the counts in, in the summer, and then I had asked that they redo the counts. I can't remember whether it was September, October, but we did do recounts mainly in the university area. And so there were, as expected, significant changes in a lot of those, and so that, those numbers are the ones that were being used. I just don't see, for example, Madison Street between, between Fourth Street and Lancaster Street as being a large, well-traveled street, you know, not like a Ridge Avenue or, or something like that. I mean, yes, it's used, but it's, it's not, it's not one that's used quite a bit. The, the school buses use Camp Street quite a bit, and I can't remember, I think maybe Jewett Street. So I, you know, a lot of those are like that. Downtown, we're talking two blocks of Second and Fourth Street in the downtown where we have narrow right-of-way, one-way streets, the, the, you know, whether we get federal money for, for replacing those is probably not a big deal. Gridley Avenue, when we put in the roundabout, those numbers went down because in the past, before the roundabout, people were using Gridley and Hickory to get to the university. You know, they would come up Chestnut Street, and then they would use Gridley and Hickory to get to the university. Now they just stay on Marquee. So that's probably why the counts went down. So I don't see that as, as being a big deal for federal money.
Apologies, I was thinking East Madison versus West Madison, and that maybe the high school would have made a difference. And then I was wondering about Gridley, which you've just explained, so thank you. The other question was just, was it mentioned how often this is done?
Well, they probably like to do them more often, but the last time we did it was 2005. Francis can probably explain.
Yeah, we, best, best way to put it is, we had a huge turnover in that section of Central Office that does the initial screening and, and stuff. And so we fell behind by one decennial census, is the best way to put it. I would say that decennial census is generally the trigger. Right now, we're catching up based upon the oldest to newest, so once we get within that decennial census, then it'll probably slow down again. But it's kind of a, it's a cyclical thing, but it really depends on where the major changes are. I mean, we had an MPO that changed the urban boundaries, so then all of a sudden, you're changing all those, what used to be rural to now urban, you know, because there's a different classification code for urban versus rural. So it really depends on a lot of different factors, but the decennial census is probably the biggest driving or most consistent one.
Kathy, questions or comments on the functional classification of streets?
No, I did have a question, but it's been answered. Thank you. I'm good.
Eileen, questions?
No questions.
Ken just left. Isaac, any questions?
No questions.
Jason, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, and here comes Ken back. I'm just watching him come back, and so we'll see if, in the meantime, Howard, were these counts done in 2020 when our population has been less than it has in past years? In terms of the number of people living in town during the September to May time period, or were these done in 2019?
The, the traffic counts were done in 2019.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any, any questions? Ken?
No questions.
Okay, great. Then I believe I'd be ready for some kind of motion, if there is one.
Barb, I move to approve Resolution 2102, the approval of the updates to the functional classification of streets in Platteville.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, going on to the next Agenda item is Enterprise Fleet Management. Adam?
Yeah, so I see that Matt's also on the call here too again tonight for Enterprise Fleet Management. But essentially, what we have in front of you is a kind of action item or proposal to enter into a master lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management. So towards kind of the, I guess, more towards the middle of 2020, towards the summer, we had got contacted by Matt, obviously, with the potential to enter into a leased agreement for some of our vehicles. So what we looked at, and number one, I want to give hats off to all the council members. You guys have been asking some really good questions about this in regards to how this would work and some of the questions and concerns. So I think you're really doing your due diligence and kind of looking into this. So what we did as a staff is kind of analyzed, you know, we took basically three vehicles out of our CIP, our city operating CIP. We took two vehicles. We took a Parks vehicle that was going to be replaced for about $30,000, then we had $12,000, which was going to put a new dump truck box replacement onto one of our vehicles. And then on the water and sewer side of the CIP, there was the repl-
And then on the water and sewer side of the CIP, there was the replacement of a, I believe it is the F-two-fifty for thirty-five thousand. So we used about seventy-seven thousand dollars to kind of give Enterprise the ability to look at what potentially that would get us if we entered into an lease agreement. And it's plus or minus anywhere between about thirteen vehicles that essentially we would be able to lease instead of, you know, the two vehicles plus the dump bed that we would be able to get. So as we've talked throughout this through multiple meetings, you know, one of our goals within our strategic plan is to continue to find ways to be obviously fiscally responsible with taxpayer resources. So reaching out to other communities that did go with this type of program have found that really what they're able to maximize is be able to get, you know, as this shows, normally we'd be buying two vehicles and a box replacement. We have the potential to get thirteen new vehicles within the city's fleet. And that helps obviously with the replacement every year. We're right now, you know, our oldest vehicle we're looking to replace is almost twenty-three years old. And about seventy percent of our fleet is anywhere from over ten years old. So what this plan hopes to do is allow us to be able to cycle out vehicles every three years or even earlier, depending on the resale ability of the vehicles, and kind of maximizing, you know, the government rate, we have the ability to get through being a municipality. And then in turn, Enterprise has the ability to, since they're a, you know, more national company, has the ability to take those vehicles and get a better resale value or help staff determine, you know, when is the best appropriate time. So what we would be looking at doing if this is approved is obviously entering an agreement where, again, this is based on the city's abilities and budgetary restrictions. So what we would like to look at doing is trying every year to try to do about sixty thousand dollars and see where that gets us in replacement. And then obviously, if there are budgetary restrictions, as we've talked with Matt, you know, we can reduce it. We can either go with zero that year and then look at other years. So there really is the ability to tailor this towards, you know, the city's budgetary restrictions or needs. One of the things then, obviously, that potentially could come in the future if this continues and this agreement works out for all parties, is to look at any other vehicles that may be included. And that obviously would be our police fleet, you know, some of our fire, you know, specific vehicles that are similar to the police vehicles. So that's something where, you know, in talking with Enterprise, what they like to do is, you know, start the relationship off with kind of your Department of Public Works and Water and Sewer Vehicles, see how that goes. And then if there's comfortability, obviously with the municipality, with Enterprise, you then look at other areas that potentially this could be kind of, you know, put into. So that's kind of again where we stand. So I'm here to answer any kind of questions or concerns you might have, otherwise Matt's here as well, and we'll go from there.
Okay, let's start around. Robin?
I don't have any questions right now.
Kathy?
Um, I, I, I guess it's, it's not questions so much as concerns. Being still in my first year, first round with this, realizing that it has not been that long ago that we approved the budget for two thousand and twenty-one. I'm, I'm concerned that even though looking at the same dollars that are budgeted for the new vehicle and maintenance for two thousand and twenty-one, it's that, that issue that if we do this at this time, it already tells us what we need to do for two thousand and twenty-two. And I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about all of the unknowns financially that, that we could be looking at both locally with our business community and then shared revenue from the state. If, I, I would have a concern that if, if we do this now, how is it going to affect us looking at a budget in ten or, in ten months from now, when we're, we're looking at two thousand and twenty-two? And I guess for my opinion would be, I would prefer to wait and relook at this towards the end of the year when we're looking at, when we see how we survive twenty twenty-one and able to have a, maybe a better sense of what two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three are going to look like, to make that kind of a, a major change.
Okay. Eileen?
I think I have some of the same concerns as far as budget. The other side of that coin is that we fall behind every year in terms of replacing vehicles. And so I'm interested in pursuing some kind of agreement. I don't think I want to go with the thirteen vehicles as we're talking about. I would much rather start smaller and rely on Adam and city staff to choose the vehicles that probably are the oldest or whatever the criteria is. I'm also concerned because there are no police cars included. And if you look at the CIP, I think for the next three or four years, maybe longer than that, there's always a police car included. They come in at around forty-one thousand, up to fifty with, you know, some of the new equipment and things you have to do. So I think we have to be aware of that. So I guess I'm interested in trying with Enterprise, but not at the level that we're talking about this evening. I would rather start small. And then I would like to see us as a council be able to have a fund amount available each year to replace cars, just as we used to do it to replace the ambulance. I think it's time to look seriously at that. I know that's a commitment every year, but I think that if you don't make a commitment like that, you don't ever catch up either.
Okay. Ken?
I'm willing to move forward with the proposal.
At the full amount, seventy-seven thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Isaac?
In favor of this one here for a couple of reasons. I think it helps us in the short term get caught up what we've well overdue on getting some new vehicles here. So I believe we save some money that way. And I also think it will save us more money in the long run by keeping caught up, if not getting ahead of schedule. We've discussed it multiple times, maintenance, fuel economy, breakdowns, letting the city mechanic actually work on something else means a lot of these, we could now be going to warranty work, which will save money in that direction. So I would be in favor of it at the full amount that we've been talking about here, so.
Full amount for this year, seventy-seven?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, Jason?
Um, in terms of, I want to just kind of go back to, have we got any feedback or, or any comments from some of the local vendors in terms of potential impact of, of this on, on their business? Or?
Yeah, I did reach out to a couple of the different, you know, topics that we have. And obviously with, if you look in our CIP, we've only been purchasing, you know, one or two vehicles a year. And all of those are typically done through, you know, a bid process. So it's not always a guarantee that they're going to come in with the lowest bid. So what potentially this does is, you know, we can certainly work with Enterprise in the vehicles that we purchase to where they're going to see some increased work would obviously be in any of the warranty issues that would be had, as well as, you know, the general servicing of them would be done directly at those dealerships. So there is the potential that, you know, some of our vendors may actually see an increase because instead of, as Isaac indicated, our mechanic kind of doing those day-to-day things, the general, you know, oil changes and everything for the first couple of years are going to be covered under, you know, the warranty or service package. So that directly benefits, obviously, the local vendors that we have, because that's who we would utilize to service those.
Okay, thanks. And I kind of, in, in that respect, I, I do also agree with kind of what Isaac was saying too about, you know, looking at this from the long run and, and being able to look at the savings over the long run. And I think that's important to, to consider in this too. So I would be for the seventy-seven thousand.
Okay, Mike, I, I have a question. We actually have four vehicles that are potential, that are potential, right? We have the two-wheel-drive pickup truck that's going to park at thirty thousand dollars. The twelve thousand dollars for the dump truck is what you're talking about. And then thirty-five from water and sewer. And then there's also a pickup truck from water and sewer that was thirty thousand, that's not included in the money part. Would, but we would expect that truck to be replaced.
Correct, so that truck would be included in the seventy-seven thousand dollars that we budgeted.
Okay.
If we go with the thirteen vehicles, one of those thirteen includes that water and sewer truck now that is not part of that budgeted figure.
So, so then how does this get spread out, since some of this is water and sewer? I mean, at least sixty-five, well, thirty-five thousand dollars is from water and sewer enterprise money. Thirty thousand is from enterprise money. And then the other forty-two is from the CIP general operations. So how does this get spread out? And second of all, what is the, I mean, you use seventy-seven to buy the cars supposedly, but don't you have a monthly amount you have to pay every month? An ongoing charge on a monthly basis, so it's not seventy-seven, it's seventy-seven upfront? And then thirteen vehicles times X amount every month? Am I wrong on that?
I can jump in, Adam, if that's okay. So the seventy-seven thousand the city has allocated to buy vehicles, we're going to replace the current process with a lease program that is going to replace up to, I think, the, the number is going to be up to fifteen or so, under that seventy-seven thousand dollars or less. So we're going to be able to replace the fifteen or so vehicles at or below the seventy-seven thousand the city currently has to spend. And that covers all costs of the entire program. So there's no upfront money needed. There's no additional cost outside of just the lease payments. It's the fifteen vehicles, monthly lease costs over the, over the next twelve months or whenever the vehicles deliver. So for just in a quick example, the two thousand and twenty-one calendar year, the, the vehicle program after this program would get started, the vehicles would deliver probably middle of the year and would only be on the books for about six or so months, which really reduces the, the really, really reduces a significant cash outlay for the city. So we're going to be well under the seventy-seven thousand dollars even with these first thirteen or fifteen vehicles for two thousand and twenty-one.
Matt, I don't think you've answered my question. And my question is, do we have a monthly payment on every one of these fifteen or thirteen vehicles?
That is correct.
And how much is that?
Well, in the menu pricing that was given to the council members a meeting or two ago will illustrate each vehicle and its cost and monthly cost to the city. And if you don't have that, I can certainly update that to Adam, and he can pass that along if he'd be.
Okay, so it's not just seventy-seven thousand. It's seventy-seven thousand plus a per, plus an amount for each car each month?
That is not correct. So the seventy-seven thousand is the city of Platteville's number that they had to spend for new vehicle replacements this year without Enterprise. Enterprise is taking that seventy-seven thousand dollars you have to spend and maximizing its ability to, to replace as many of, as many vehicles as possible without exceeding the seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Meaning, all caught, that pays all cost for all vehicles, and we don't need any other money?
You wouldn't need, you would not need any other money for the two thousand and twenty-one calendar year to replace these thirteen to fifteen vehicles.
Okay, so there isn't a monthly lease payment on the vehicles? The seventy-seven thousand, you would divide among the fifteen vehicles and divide by twelve?
The, each vehicle has its own monthly payment. The seventy-seven thousand is just a, a dollar figure the city had available to spend. And so we, out of respect to that number for your taxpayers, we wanted to build an analysis around that number or come in below that number. So each vehicle will have its own monthly payment assigned to it. We will cost code it by department, by general fund, either one-on-one status, one or two-on-one, whatever its code is. And then that, that vehicle's lease payment will be allocated to that cost center for the city. So your seventy-seven dollars will just be spent over the next few months for those vehicles. And the best part you have for two thousand and twenty-one is the vehicles, when they're ordered and then delivered, will not deliver until probably June or July of two thousand and twenty-one. And the city and their taxpayers do not start paying for the vehicles until they deliver. So when you add up lease payments for only six months, it comes in well under seventy-seven thousand. And so we're estimating anywhere between five and ten thousand dollars cash out the door after we sell off your thirteen or fifteen older vehicles as well. So the cash outlay in the first year of two thousand and twenty-one will be significantly less than seventy-seven thousand. So there will be a surplus coming back in your budget from this program in year one.
Okay.
All right, did that answer your question, Barb?
I, I think I'm, I'm clear on it. I was, I was afraid we were committing seventy-seven thousand dollars, and then we had fifteen vehicles that we were making monthly payments on and for twelve months, and that was going to just, where was that money going to come from?
Yep, nope, so just monthly payments, there's no commitment to seventy-seven thousand. The best part is we're going to be actually well under that number, and you can still replace the thirteen to fifteen vehicles in doing that, so.
And so if next year we look at our budget and we say to you, Matt, sorry, there is not seventy-seven. This year we have forty-two thousand, that's it.
So our goal is to maximize what budget you have available. And then we strategize with your decision-makers about a replacement strategy to stay at or below that number. And what you're going to find is, you know, our dedicated account management team is going to find a way to do that.
Okay, because when I look back at our last four or five years, I don't think we bought one vehicle last year that would have fit in your program. The year before, maybe we bought a couple pickup trucks. I think the year before that, we didn't buy any. And the year before that, maybe we bought one.
Well, what's nice about starting out of the gates really quick with thirteen to fifteen vehicles is you may not have to replace anything next year or maybe even the year after. So that's the best part about this, is you get caught up right away without having to spend your full seventy-seven thousand in this first year. And you may not have to replace anything in years two or three, because we're starting out with a good amount already.
So in year two of these fifteen vehicles, we pay you nothing?
No, there's, yeah, there's reoccurring lease payments. And in the analysis that we presented a couple of meetings back illustrated that as a ten-year model. So it showed over ten years the sustainable savings of the program over a ten-year period compared to what the city was actively doing for the last five to six years in their acquisition methods, maintenance costs and fuel costs and combining that, or comparing that, I'm sorry, to the enterprise program on a ten-year basis.
Okay. All right. Uh, Robin, any additional questions?
Trying to remember, so this is like a, a lease to, we own it essentially outright and then can trade it in. What happens if Enterprise, sorry, I really don't wish this upon you, but what happens if that company goes under? Where do we sit?
Great question. So chances are very, very slim for that to happen, but obviously, that is obviously, that could happen, right? So if that were to be the case, the city of Platteville retains all ownership benefits of the vehicle. So for some reason, Enterprise were to fall under, you could simply buy out the vehicle for its remaining book value on the balance sheet. Or you could buy out the vehicle with a funding institution and finance it elsewhere. So there's multiple different ways for you to approach that scenario. Enterprise being one of the top ten largest privately held companies in the world. I don't see us going anywhere anytime soon, but obviously that is, could be a concern in the future.
Okay. Kathy, any additional questions?
Um, no, but maybe, Matt, when Barb was talking about the clarification, then it, then it occurred to me. So if we're talking seventy-seven thousand allocated for this year for thirteen to fifteen vehicles, does that same lease payment per vehicle per month automatically go into the next year? And then it's increased if we add more vehicles?
Yep, that is.
But that, that, that is going to be in place for a number of years?
Yep, so each, each vehicle will have an assigned lease term. Each vehicle has its own DNA and own life cycle that we, we assign to. Um, each vehicle has its own DNA and own life cycle that we, we assign to based on when we feel that vehicle should be cycled out to be the most cost effective. So there will be reoccurring payments for each vehicle type. What you will see is every year there will be leased vehicles being sold off, um, at, whether it's one year old, two, three or four years old, or even five years old, depending on the vehicle type. And when you see newer vehicles selling off at one to two to three years old, um, that positive equity that comes back from that sale comes back to the city of Platteville to, to pay down the program. Or you can reinvest it in your general fund or however you see fit. Um, and that's where the sustainable savings of the program and the, the ten year model that we showed you a few meetings ago, will show you that this program does work, uh, from start to finish over the next ten plus years. And the other thing to note too, just, I, I would assume it's a question that someone may ask. If we're going to have fif- thirteen to fifteen new vehicles coming in, we're going to be selling your thirteen to fifteen older vehicles for you as well. There's roughly sixty some thousand dollars and, and value in those assets that will actually help buy down the, the lease cost. Um, so when you look at when the vehicles actually deliver for the calendar year of twenty twenty one, plus the funds coming back, the asset value coming back from those vehicles, uh, that's what makes this program really work, uh, not just the first year, but years to come from the off leased vehicles when we start selling them as well.
Okay, Eileen?
Just another question. Who, who makes the decision on which vehicles are traded in and at what time?
Great question. So enterprise will bring recommendations to Adam, to Howard, to your, your leading officials. And then ultimately it's up to them to decide, uh, what vehicles to replace when and what they would like to replace them with. And/or it's up to them to bring it to council for any advice or recommendations. And Adam can certainly add on to that if I missed anything.
No, that's pretty much the exact process is we would be, you know, as part of our kind of goal of revamping our CIP and looking, you know, five years out and future years out, that's all part of this equation is we would be working with enterprise to determine, okay, at what point do you feel, you know, this vehicle, whether it's one, two, three or five years needs to be replaced? And then within our, obviously by doing this, our replacement schedule for vehicles gets moved up because a lot of the vehicles we had, you know, ten, fifteen years down the road, which has been kind of our typical cycle, gets added, you know, gets moved up sooner. So that's all part of the CIP that we plan to kind of revamp, uh, with looking with other things here, getting a better understanding of what, when it should be replaced, what happens, and that would be included in the budget then that we would be asking the council, obviously, to approve or hear.
So next year, if we decided out of the twelve or fifteen vehicles that the city itself would like to purchase two or three of those vehicles as opposed to having them being traded in and replaced by a newer vehicle, that would be an option we could, we could actually choose?
Correct.
Okay, and then, um, in looking at your numbers, Matt, the seventy seven and then, as you said, the vehicles that would be sold owned by the city now have some value, so that will come off. And then you indicated in your, um, presentation, I think that after the first year, perhaps twelve vehicles might be sold again and then new vehicles purchased. And so I think if I remember correctly, the cost to the city would probably be around sixty eight thousand dollars in twenty twenty two, if you followed that pro forma. So again, I'm looking at, I realize from what you've said now, we could probably change that so we wouldn't have to choose to spend sixty eight thousand. But that was my concern, that it, it looked to me like it was a definite, pretty much seventy thousand again, the second year, and that kind of does lock the city into that amount unless we can opt out. Uh, in, in terms of which ones get sold and don't get sold, and that changes the, the numbers.
Yeah, great, great thoughts there and comments. So the, the program's hundred percent flexible, so we're going to work with Howard and Adam and strategize with them uh, and let them know what we recommend from the marketplace, uh, when to sell, when not to sell vehicles, what they're worth, how much equity do we expect to come back from all the vehicles combined? What did the new vehicles cost? And put that together for them to, to really see the analytics and data, uh, to make the best business decisions for your taxpayers. So in the first five years of doing this program, we estimate a savings of over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars just based on what your current method is, which is a twenty three year cycle. And we're going to switch that in the first five years to about a three and a half year cycle. Um, and then a sustainably, basically a break even from there on out. So when we look at running newer, healthier vehicles, better, uh, less downtime, more productivity for your mechanics, uh, more fuel efficiency, better carbon footprint in your marketplace for your taxpayers, and then safer vehicles for, for your staff, uh, to protect your constituents and serve them. Uh, this is a great win for your city, uh, for your taxpayers and even the local vendors in the area with the delivery service, the warranty work that is going to be provided obviously by them and other routine service as well.
And we do have a five, five to ten percent potential increase in our insurance cost, so there will be some of that that has to be taken into account as well. And, and I realize we may get some fuel costs, I'm not sure it was going to totally offset that increase in insurance. So I think what I'm looking at is maybe maintenance for a savings per se. I have no other questions.
Ken, any other questions?
No questions.
Isaac?
Other questions?
Jason?
Nope, everything's been, um, touched on already.
Okay, so my concern is that we don't have that, we, the potential for us having seventy seven next year is not great. So if this program requires us to have seventy seven every year, I don't, I don't see how that's going to happen, Adam.
So it wouldn't, it's a, it doesn't technically require us to have seventy seven thousand every year. It's, it's baked into the conversations of, you know, if we got with the seventy seven thousand we have now, that kickstarts the program. So as kind of Eileen and, and kind of Matt have indicated, you know, that can be thirteen vehicles or if that's a concern, you know, we can obviously, Howard, myself, we can work with Matt and look at, you know, what makes sense to start with, whether it's maybe we start with a smaller scale then, if that's the concern, you know, that the council kind of is alluding to. But then what we'll do then is work with Matt to ensure that that's baked into, you know, what he says is we're going to be obviously leasing these amount of vehicles and the ones that we're selling is going to go into this pot of money that just like we indicated, has to cover the cost of leasing those vehicles. So that's the same thing, it's, you know, when you look at it, if next year in our CIP, we have vehicles that were slated that are now being bought. So instead of, you know, us buying the one and two, it's now a three, we utilize those funds that we were already kind of intending would be in the budget. That's where we go to Matt and say, okay, you know, in years one through five, we are anticipating, you know, we had seventy seven thousand this year, forty thousand this year, twenty thousand this year, ten thousand this year. We need to make sure that whatever amount of vehicles we buy, the payments that we're making every month for the five years max out to that we're not over, going over that amount. So that's essentially the work that goes into with, you know, kind of Howard and Matt and myself is to ensure that whatever we're buying, just like you said, it's we can't go over that amount because we don't know if it's going to be, there's no guarantee it's going to be there. So we have to ensure that what we're purchasing is in line with what is in the budget.
Or what's available for a budget.
For the budget, correct.
So tonight, the motion doesn't have anything to do with the amount of money. Tonight, the motion would have to do only with entering into a master agreement with enterprise to, uh, uh, to start a clo- uh, leasing program of city vehicles.
Correct.
Okay. All right, folks, is there anybody with any other questions? And are we, does anyone want to offer a motion?
I'm, that
I would
Kathy?
Adam, the, you raised a question though. If the purpose of this motion is just to enter into a master equity lease agreement, what's next then? I mean, where's the, the seventy seven thousand dollars? I mean, I thought that's what we were actually looking at.
So that'll be, that's part of the agreement, obviously, we can enter into Matt. I guess that's the question, you know, from what I'm seeing from the council is there is some concern with whether or not, you know, thirteen vehicles, you know, the seventy seven thousand can be sustained over the course. So obviously that's something, you know, when we see the specifics and work with Matt on the agreement, you know, those are the questions we're going to be asking is, okay, you know, with the seventy seven thousand dollars that we have budgeted, we need to be able to obviously provide that back to the council and show them, here's how this all plays out. It's, you know, this amount of money is the agreement, we're going to be going for this amount of vehicles, um, et cetera, to show that. Am I wrong in saying that, Matt, or am I missing anything there?
No, you, these are great points and I'm glad they're being brought up. So, um, that's exactly right. It, it's more of just an agreement to work with us and then we put a final plan together with Adam and Howard and company for this calendar year, the, for this model year of twenty twenty one. And based on that, that analysis, that menu pricing, uh, knowing the dollars that are available to spend, we obviously build an analysis and, and replacement strategy around that. It's not for us to maximize it, we want to come in as, as, as much under that number as possible. So just for a quick example, over the next ten years, to replace the fleet, um, on a three year average cycle, would cost the capital dollars on average forty thousand, four hundred dollars, uh, give or take obviously one or two percent. So that's for the next ten, ten years, the average capital outlay, so cash out, cash in. So I'm buying vehicles, releasing vehicles and money coming back from resale, not maintenance or no maintenance, no fuel. Um, there's, the capital budget averages roughly forty thousand dollars only. So that take, does not take into consideration maintenance savings, fuel savings, administrative time savings or anything of that nature.
Okay.
All right, and so as long as Adam stays within the budget and as long as they don't overextend our budget for next year, you know, which is, which is really my concern. It's not so much the seventy seven this year. And Kathy, I think you mentioned that was your concern too. It's not so much this year, it's like, what comes next? And, and what kind of hole does it put us in?
Yeah, yeah.
Those are, those are great, uh, great thoughts. Um, we, we, we're very successful in the government sector with the city of Akross, the city of Sparta, uh, which is a similar size of Platteville, they just came on board a couple of weeks ago. They actually replaced, uh, nineteen vehicles. Uh, city of Two Rivers is a very similar size, they just replaced twenty two vehicles. City of West Bend just replaced twenty two. Um, city of Oak Creek has been doing this a couple of years and, um, we are always working with their officials and letting them know what to expect, how to maneuver through, what dollars they have to spend, what equity in their vehicles, so their current vehicles are coming back to them so they can apply it to those capital dollars that they need to spend, so.
Okay, folks. We've discussed and rehashed and rediscovered now since November. So, does anybody have a motion? They want to Ken?
Yes, I have this motion. I move to authorize city staff to enter into a master equity lease agreement and maintenance agreement with enterprise fleet management.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Isaac to enter into a master lease agreement and maintenance agreement with enterprise fleet management. Candace, Willard.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Yes. No.
Motion carries.
Okay. Going on to our next agenda items. If I can find my agenda, which I've now buried, so I'll have to go back to my online agenda. Uh, our next agenda item is sidewalk policy. So Joe and Howard?
Yeah, I'll, I'll kick it off. Um, so we talked about this at a couple of meetings now. Um, we're basically looking for the council to, uh, uh, adopt a policy that uh, staff can use as, uh, basically a guide for, uh, future, um, modifications to ordinances, uh, primarily subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance as they relate to sidewalks, uh, for new development and, uh, so forth. So we, the, the last meeting, the, the council had, uh, basically narrowed it down to, uh, one of the options that was presented, option two, for fu- future consideration or further consideration. So, um, that is, is in your packet. I, I think I went through that previously and I know we've talked about it, so I don't want to get into any other additional detail, but I'll try to answer any questions if you have it. Also in your packet, uh, since the, the last meeting, the, uh, community safe routes committee had met again and discussed, um, this matter. And they had some additional recommendations, um, regarding, uh, option two. Uh, I was not at that meeting, so I can't discuss that in a detail, but, um, those recommendations are also included in your packet as far as the, a red line copy uh, of that option two, um, for your consideration. So as I mentioned, this, this really, I kind of viewed as really more of a starting point, even though it seems like we've been working on this for a while is, you know, as I mentioned, this is kind of the guide that we'll use to, uh, make, uh, future modifications to the ordinances themselves, which obviously will come back to the council for approval when we do, um, suggest or make recommendations for council to consider those ordinance changes. But it also could be used for, uh, you know, guidance when, uh, staff is working on CIP projects for street improvements and so forth. Um, so I don't know if Howard or Adam have anything to add, um, based on those other meetings?
Howard and Adam, or Adam?
No.
Howard or Adam?
Uh, no, I think you'll just definitely see, you know, the community safe routes, um, you know, had some definite concerns with, again, some of the language, uh, with, you know, it, you know, specifically with the industrial park, you know, not having sidewalks, which, you know, kind of goes through, as we talked about, there's multiple organizations that are all kind of weighing in on this with, with varying opinions. Um, but I think, you know, again, the community safe routes, you know, number one goal, uh, and really the reason that committee was created was, um, you know, to continue to provide recommendations on making sure that our, you know, streets and, uh, you know, sidewalks and alleyways and everything have accessibility for everybody, you know, from cars to bikes to walking. Um, and so that's kind of the main concern here is to, is to give a better understanding for, you know, staff on really trying to make sure, you know, when we're looking at site plans and we're looking at development that we're taking into account, you know, what the planning commission is looking for, what the council is looking for, what the safe routes committee is looking for. And then also being cognizant of, you know, it's still trying to be, you know, a community that brings in development and, and doesn't run into, you know, issues and tries to tackle everything at once. So that's really the, the, kind of the hope of this document is to just kind of get everybody some consensus on, um, you know, agreement as best as we can in regards to, you know, a sidewalk policy.
Okay, thank you, Adam. I see Christina is here from the, uh, community safe routes committee. Uh, Christina, do you have comments you want to make at this time?
Yeah, I would like to do that. Um, yeah, we have been at this a long time. And the reason why I think it's so important that, um, I speak is because I think it's too vague. I think that the policy that we have, like, um, Joe said, this is going to be used to develop an ordinance for which city staff and developers and people are going to read that should be clear on how to behave in different situations. I really just don't think that this policy does that. Um, I feel like it's more vague than our existing ordinance that we have. Um, and it's created neighborhoods and businesses that are already disconnected, and so I don't feel like this policy is an improvement. Specifically, I have concerns about the new subdivision component, the, um, installation of sidewalks on street projects, and then the guiding principle number five. Um, it's also, I wanted to let you know that during our safe routes meeting, city staff has voiced their desire to favor what I would consider unknown future developments who don't want to provide sidewalks in Platteville versus providing safe, connected routes for the people who actually live here. Um, and one can see this desire has already been carried out over multiple years in Platteville, um, in, at businesses and subdivisions that don't have, um, sidewalks in them right now. Um, we really, we only get a chance to build infrastructure really every sixty years. Um, hopefully your experiences of council have shown you how difficult it is. The space is gone, the people are there, um, do it right the first time. And so, um, when a new home or business or apartment gets developed, we need to provide that sidewalk right then and there. It's much more difficult and expensive to do it, um, later. And if we do it right the first time in our new developments, we're providing these sidewalks to residents and businesses for the first day. Um, and this is when it's cheapest and easiest to do it, and it's a very small cost for a great fund of it. And then we also must acknowledge that we're discussing whether or not to have sidewalks, a fundamental piece of infrastructure for everybody, which costs less than one percent of a project. a fundamental piece of infrastructure for everybody, which costs less than one percent of a project cost, really from the place of privilege. You might not need, you personally might not need a sidewalk to get to work or school safely, but other people do. And that's our job, is to think of these other people. Sidewalks are inexpensive. They're basic pieces of infrastructure used to create connecting, um, connected equitable communities. And it seems like the city, um, values diversity, inclusion, and equity. I mean, you're creating a committee specifically on there about that topic, and there's no cheaper way to provide safe, equitable, and connected transportation for everybody than providing sidewalks for your people who live here. So I want you to, um, maybe you haven't looked at the census specifically for Platteville. I have. The census for Platteville shows that twenty-six percent of our city is under eighteen years old and sixty-five and over. So that means that twenty-six percent of our population cannot drive due to their age and potentially, um, their abilities. Um, six point three percent are over sixty-five, of, of the sixty-five year, si- six point three percent of, uh, under sixty-five-year-old people ha- are in Platteville have a disability, and they don't, the census does not provide information about those with a disability greater than sixty-five. Thirty-one point four percent of people in Platteville live in poverty. Um, and Federal Highways says that up to thirty-seven percent of people in our country have a disability. In our town, we also have nine thousand-ish college students, um, who spend their, uh, who, um, who spend their money here in Platteville. And I remem- I know from previous conversations, a lot of people would prefer those cars not being parked in their neighborhoods and not driving on their streets. So that means we need to provide them a way to get from A to B, and a sidewalk is a good way to do that. And just in case you need a reminder of some of the safety benefits and other benefits that sidewalks provide, um, they provide a dedicated space for people who, um, to not walk on the roadway. According to Federal Highways and their safety and sidewalks, um, information, forty-five hundred pedestrians are killed each year, and almost eight percent of these deaths are walking along the road deaths in which sidewalks weren't provided, provided what, um, uh, provided, um, walking, uh, spaces separate from the travel lane, uh, travel lanes can provide up to eighty-eight percent, uh, of those, can prevent eighty-eight percent of those deaths. Roadways without sidewalks are more than twice as likely to have pedestrian crashes at, um, as sites with sidewalks on both sides of the street. I've already talked in the equity piece. Um, um, you know, installing sidewalks is really, it's less than one percent of a local street project. Uh, I hear council and city staff say they don't want inside sidewalks because it can save money. If you really want to save money, you should reduce the width of the streets to make more space for the sidewalks. We don't need two lanes of vacant street, uh, lanes on, most of our streets have on-street parking on both sides, which is extremely underutilized. You could reduce the street width to give, um, to, to save money versus sidewalks. Um, they're expensive to, uh, uh, the, at, allowing the, um, the, the, the parked cars on the streets, they're expensive, they're, they have to maintain them, it's extra width. Um, you have to provide the pavement, you've got to provide, um, snow removal, and, um, it also results in more impermeable surfaces, which means we have more runoff to deal with, which is also expensive. So if you really want to save money, I think you should look at places where the, you'd have a much bigger savings, like street width, than you would by not having sidewalks. Um, I've already talked about the ages and abilities. Um, sidewalks improve mobility. Um, COVID has shown us the need, mental health-wise, or fitness-wise, recreational-wise, business-wise, to have more outdoor space. Sidewalks provide that. Um, sidewalks provide another mode of transport, so it could reduce congestion. It's a, uh, separated space. We've got people who are loving to use our new trail. People are using Smith Park a ton. I've got a new street, uh, sidewalk in front of my house. I've got lots of people on the sidewalk. People want to walk, and wouldn't it be nice if they could walk to where they want to go versus driving and walking there? Um, as far as obesity, sidewalks can help reduce, um, obesity. That is a known, uh, uh, something that's known. The US obesity rate is at forty-two percent, um, for all adults, uh, are obese. In Wisconsin, it's at thirty-four percent. So we really can't, um, afford not to provide sidewalks. So I just feel at the very least, we need stronger language in the policy so that we get stronger language in the ordinance, so that it's clear that we want to provide sidewalks. I recognize that there are situations where that might not be possible, but we have also in the original po- uh, in one of the policy drafts, we created an exception, and then these exceptions then should be, uh, could be used by the city on the local street projects. And I, uh, have some specific recommendations, um, on new subdivisions and the guiding principles as well. So I'm truly just concerned that the existing policy is too vague to move forward so that it would be clear for city staff what to do. I feel like it'd be up to city staff interpretation, which would res- which doesn't get us any further than where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we've had this on the agenda a couple of times. Robin, starting around. Your feelings, your suggestions, your comments?
I know, uh, Christina talked for quite a while, but she said she had specific recommendations. Uh, can we give time to hear those?
I believe they were in the draft that she sent. So I think it's in your packet. I believe. So look at page, I don't know, two hundred and thirty-nine, I think it starts at, or two hundred and thirty-eight.
Look at there, a second. Um, so, I really appreciate her points to, um, creating a community that is addressing everyone's needs, um, encouraging walking outdoor spaces, absolutely, um, one hundred percent agreement that, um, we do need to be upfront that we are wanting this, not just that we have it on the books, but that we feel strongly that it's important to be prioritized. So, um, I did, I, I did have some hesitations about dropping some of that language. Um, I also agree with subdivisions getting it done upfront. Um, I had a specific question. I don't know if it makes any sense to get into this, but, um, as we discussed this Dewey Street project that we approved, um, it kind of became a case example that when I contacted, uh, people living on that street, they said, please do not spend money on the second side of the street. Just make sure that the first one is repaired. Um, so I guess it kind of just created that interesting reflection of when we go to people and ask specifics, um, that street's kind of unique. So, do we, or do we have the ability to reconsider if we're spending, um, that, complete, completing both sides? Uh, if I can read my notes.
So Robin, are you suggesting we don't do both sides, or we do do both sides at Dewey Street?
Um, not, there's a section that doesn't have both sides yet, and, um, the residents actually said maybe even take out the part that goes to nowhere, like it literally is in front of a couple of houses and then just stops. Uh, they said, I would suggest just taking that out. And, and then that point, they were saying widen the street perhaps. But I, I don't feel that I have ever considered what Christina was just suggesting about, um, not prioritizing parking on both sides of the street. So absolutely, we have parking issues in, in the city and around the university. I think it's essential that we have both sides. Um, but going forward on projects, considering narrowing the street, I think is a recommendation I never would have imagined hearing. So I appreciate that point. Um, that's all I have for right now. I have to read my own writing.
Okay. Uh, Kathy?
Um, I'm, I understand this is a policy that is to be used internally for staff to revise the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Are all ordinances, when they are complete, um, have wiggle room? Is there, are there things that are interpreted? I, I guess, I don't know. Um, we hear Joe almost every meeting explaining something that's in an ordinance, and whether you can do it, or if there's a gray area, or he has to check. I, I, I think the efforts with the revisions, um, will allow the staff to, to revise the ordinance, uh, make revisions to it. But, but I do have, um, yeah, I, I recently talked to someone who purposely bought a home that did not have a sidewalk because they did not want a sidewalk in front of their house. And I have a question. Has anybody, um, on the Plan Commission, Safe Routes Committee, whatever, talked to any of the developers?
Uh, Plan Commission, I, I guess, um, not particularly because, um, I guess from my aspect, if a developer is coming in, it's kind of like, they have to follow the recipe we have. If they don't want to follow the recipe, then they probably don't come.
I'm, I'm, I guess I meant developers that are already here. Property that's available to be developed, that's owned by local people. Because, uh, I, I have talked to several, and they, they said, well, part of it comes up that we, the, the, we as a community need to decide. We have a, a strategic plan where we're looking for more housing, more affordable housing, and to, um, expect a developer to come in and put in a new subdivision and put sidewalks in before anything else happens, before, even before lots are sold, raises the cost to develop those properties. So, it kind of works against us moving ahead to try to encourage more affordable housing by acknowledging that the infrastructure is going to be more expensive, maybe more challenging for, and interesting to developers from the get-go. Um, and I understand, uh, walkability. Um, I know that the, um, it is very important to a community. But I also, and Christina, to your point, yes, infrastructure should be taken care of when, when a project goes, but I also am not a believer that every single property needs to have a sidewalk in this entire, within the city limits. Um, it's, it's, and part of that comes down to the fact that the, the, the process that we use, the city's responsible for maintenance. The more we're adding sidewalks, um, then, then the cost for maintenance, that, there, there again, it comes down to that budget. How, um, um, how, how are we addressing that? I, I think there needs to be, I, I'm, I'm questioning the balance. Um, and then we are also struggling with, um, um, Howard, point of clarification, what is our, um, hundred and twenty years, hundred and fifty-year process to, to turn, uh, redo a street? Um, and as part of a strategic plan, we want to, hopefully, are going to be looking at being able to increase the CIP for street constructions. And if we're mandating that every single project and every, every single, um, section of street shall have sidewalk, that, we know that's going to affect the, the, the budget for that project. Projects may get delayed even further to, until we get CIP money that's going to cover everything. Um, I, I guess, bottom line for me, I'm, I, I like the fact, I like the changes that, that have been implement, implemented, but I, I feel also very strongly that there needs to be, um, the, um, let me see, the exact term is the, the, the exceptions, because, um, there may be, well, while we have a decision to make a change in the ordinance now, five years from now, a decision that's made now could, if there's the word "shall", could change the outcome for a project or something down the road. So, that's, that's, um, my three cents.
Okay. Eileen?
Uh, yeah, I think I'm all right with a lot of the information in option two, uh, the requirements. Um, I do see that in the new subdivision, it, there are two options. Sidewalk shall be installed when any of the following conditions have been met. Um, for each individual lot, sidewalks shall be constructed within the subdivision, but it also says that you could have an agreement with the developer about installing sidewalks within appears, um, or an approved agreement. Um, but I think we say within three years, we would have to have sidewalk. Uh, so the new subdivisions, I think we can really work with developers on that to make it less cost prohibitive upfront. And hopefully as the lots sell, then that money can be accumulated for the sidewalks. Uh, I don't really have any of the comments on the rest of what has been proposed, except it did occur to me that in something like Golden Heights or No Wood subdivision where there are no sidewalks, the way we have it written now, I believe that we say that when that street is reconstructed, sidewalks should be installed. And I got to thinking about Ridge Avenue, where we did not require sidewalks, rather we made a, uh, lane that was for bicycles and walking. And so I'm wondering if we could consider something like that for some subdivisions like No Wood or Golden Heights, which have really wide streets, as Christina mentioned, and that would allow, I think, the option perhaps to have the walking path, bicycle path on the pavement. Um, that, to me, is kind of a compromise because sidewalks are very expensive to put in. And yes, I would like to think we could do it throughout the city, but realistically, we have to approach it with what we can do with the money that we have. Uh, those are my comments.
So do you have, do you, okay, ten comments?
Well, first of all, a question.
Okay.
Now, this has been, uh, considered by the Plan Commission. And so when did the Safe Routes Committee start working with the Plan Commission on the sidewalk policy? Have you been working? This is for Christina. Have you been working completely all along with the Plan Commission as far as coming up with the sidewalk policy?
Yes.
And? Well, not alone, right, with city staff?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the whole committee. Have you been working with the Plan Commission through the year, through the whole year? This has been about a year this has been going on.
Yep.
The, the Plan Commission and the Safe Routes Committee held at least two, I'm thinking maybe three joint meetings together.
But please recognize that because of Zoom, it's not a conversation, right? It's a, you say, it's kind of like here, right? You get to, you get to say something, but I don't get a rebuttal, right? And so it's, it's not like normal when you're in a room and you're trying to hash through what the best way to, to make language is. It's not like that. You get a turn, you get to speak, and then when you're done, you're done. So, um, all I can do is talk one time. I can put it in, and we can have a discussion in our Community Safe Routes Committee meeting that we don't necessarily agree, put it in the minutes. It doesn't get in the draft, and then we're, we're here.
Well, I, I look at what your comments are here, and you have a lot of comments, and so we have option two. And trying to fit.
You just muted yourself, Ken.
Okay, so you, you have a lot of comments here from the Safe. Okay, so you, you have a lot of comments here from the Safe Routes Committee, I assume, and where to put all these things, we're supposed to go through now and insert them and see how they fit in option two, is that correct? I was working on that. My, my opinion, if, if you're, if you're concerned about option two. Why isn't Safe Routes Committee coming up with changes?
Ken, you muted yourself again. I think what Ken is trying to say is, why wasn't there an option three? Is that right?
What I am saying is that maybe the Safe Routes Committee ought to go and make up their own policy here using option two, and we look at the difference.
All right, is that your comments, Ken?
That's my comment, I just.
Isaac?
No additional comments, Kathy and Eileen pretty much read the comments I was going to do.
Okay, Jason?
Um, one area that we, that I remember talking about during the, the most recent Safe Routes Committee meeting was the industrial park and Paydeck had requested that. That they be consulted in terms of like sidewalks in the industry park and. I think for me, where I struggle is, you know, I, I definitely feel like sidewalks and all that are, are important and, and we need to have good connectivity in, in our city to be able to, to give access to, to all of our residents. And at the same time, the other part of it that, that I hear is, you know. Through my time in the council, I've seen that like developers in industry and all of that, for whatever reason, this sidewalk thing becomes like almost a, a deal breaker in a way. And I'm not sure, and I don't want to get into why that is or, or that or, or debate, but it's, it seems like the more and more that I am involved in, in that, in those discussions, it seems like that's kind of a reality. And in terms of that, you know, I would, it's hard because I would hate for, for Platteville to also lose out on potential, you know, businesses or, or industries or, or things like that, that would bring in, you know, job opportunities for citizens and things, and I would hate for them. And again, we can, we can debate whether this is right or wrong, but they ultimately can decide, well, you know, your sidewalk requirement is, is a deal breaker for us, which would be very sad. And again, whether that's right or wrong, I don't know, but, but it sounds like that potentially could be. An option or, or, or a reality. And the other thing that I've really kind of seen on council in terms of the financial piece is that, you know, if we don't have a tax base, if we don't have money coming in, whether that's from, you know, developments or, or industry coming in, people, you know, providing jobs for people to pay tax and, and be able to do that. A lot of projects, you know, a lot of things that we really want and really feel are important in the community, unfortunately. Don't happen the way that we do. So that's kind of where my conundrum is in, in terms of, you know, I struggle because in, in some respects. It's unfortunately can be a deal breaker for things that also could help our city. But at the same time, you know, I also don't want to, to necessarily say, okay, yeah, you know, we, we, we don't want to be, you know, firm on the, the importance of, of sidewalks in, in the city either. And then going back to what I've said in previous meetings, for me, it's important to have access to the most connectivity as we can. So, you know, again, I would hate to see us putting resources and, and things into areas that, you know, definitely can benefit from and, and, and that from sidewalks, but then other parts that are, are necessary and provide more access for people are getting ignored. And so that's an area that I really, you know, I'm concerned about too. And that goes back to the fiscal piece, you know, because again, unfortunately, the reality is that, you know, when, when it comes down to a lot of this stuff is the money aspect. And again, whether that's right or wrong, good or bad, whatever, you know, we're not going to debate that, but that's kind of some of the areas that I've been struggling with and, and some of the, some of the things that I've seen really kind of impacting this policy.
Okay, folks. We've had this on the agenda a couple of times. We've seen that the Safe Routes Committee has discussed it, and we've heard from Christina in terms of some of the aspects of how they think it might be weaker than what we have. I know that Howard and Joe and Adam have been in a lot of meetings about this, and I can pretty much attest to the fact that they know that sidewalks are a desired thing as we have said in our side, in one of the drafts, that sidewalks should be provided on all existing. That's a guiding principle, and then this is trying to further clarify that. So I, I guess if this item is on for action tonight, so I guess if there's to be action. What is that action going to be? And if there's not to be action. What does that mean?
Well, this is my comment, since we've taken this long on it already, I don't mind at all waiting another two weeks or whatever it is to look at this more carefully.
I second that. I know that's not an action I'm seconding, but that.
Yes, then he would be making a motion to table.
Yeah, but I would also say it's got to be more than two weeks for it to really hit the Safe Routes Committee, again, if that's what we're suggesting.
We have a meeting next week, and so we could, we could put it to our agenda. I don't, I haven't looked at my agenda close enough to know if there's room on the agenda for that. I would, I would guess that there is. But I'm not, I'm not, like, I would like some guidance as far as like, does that mean then, or clarification, does that mean we should meet with the Planning Commission and the, and staff again before we bring it back here?
My question is, are you satisfied with the Plan Commission has said? Apparently you are not satisfied.
I'm not satisfied with the draft.
Option two?
No.
Well, as I said before, then I'd like to see option two modified by the Safe Routes to give me an idea of what you actually want.
Okay.
Because I go through all this, that aligns, that aligns going in all over and.
Okay, so Ken is making a motion to table. That's a non-debatable motion, seconded by Robin. And Ken's original motion was it would be tabled for two weeks and brought back?
I will table it to the appropriate time that it's ready to be brought to the council.
So if that's a year, that's fine.
A year? I doubt if it'll take that long.
Could we just ask for an update in a month?
Okay, so, Ken, are you agreeable to February? Ken, February 9?
February 9.
Okay, this is, the motion is table, the sidewalk policy until February 9, at which time there would be an expectation that we would have an option three.
Can I make another comment? I, I understand that there's probably. Polar extremes on some of the points within this policy in this room in the meeting, but I wonder if Christina or the Safe Routes Committee might be able to present where they believe they're offering compromise when it comes to the conversation of developers. I think that will help us all find compromise better or agreement on this. I know the exceptions is probably part of what you were, but if you can lay that out for us all, I think that would help.
Okay, so motion to table sidewalk policy until February 9. Motion by Ken, seconded by Robin. So Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so this will be back on our agenda on February 9 with option three.
Thank you.
Can I have a clarifier? Will that be for action or, or not?
I doubt it. I, I suspect it will be back on our agenda as, as an information item unless the information comes to us well in advance. Okay? All right, next on our agenda, budget carryover, council chamber floor refishing.
Yes.
Adam, oh, Howard, pardon me, Adam or Howard, whoever.
Um. Shannon Butson is our building maintenance person. He's been working with our contractors, but specifically he's been looking at replacing the floor in, replacing the nails with screws in the floors, flooring in the council chambers. To help reduce the squeaking that we have in there. A, a number of years ago, a portion of the council chambers was refinished, but the majority of it was not. If we had, if we had had. Money in the budget to do a remodel, it would have been included, but there was no money for that. We do have about roughly $9,000 remaining in the 2020 outlay budget line item. We have a, a quote for 11,000 to do a professional refinishing, that's the lowest quote. And so what we're asking is to carry over the balance of that 2020 outlay account, add it to existing 2021 outlay in order to do finishing of that floor.
Okay, questions or comments, Robin?
No, I'm just, would be happy to see it done, I guess.
Kathy?
Um. Yes, um, I absolutely think it should be done. Um, question, Howard, did I see that Thompson Floors had the low bid for that? I have had personal experience with them, they do a phenomenal job. And I think that it's about time that that floor gets done. But, um, so there won't be any more screws put into the wood floor? Is that something that Thompson Floor takes care of? As far as, it's not just refinishing, will he? Does there's a way of tacking down those, those old boards without screws, I think?
Shannon is still finishing with, with the screws to try to help that, but Thompson would be doing a refinishing to.
Okay.
Restore.
Yeah.
I think that Shannon has been pulling nails.
Pulling nails.
Which had also been put in, which were more problematic.
Okay, okay.
If you can see, there they are, he's working up.
Yep, it's a lot of work. Eileen, any questions or comments?
No, I am in favor of moving forward.
Ken, any questions or comments?
I am in favor of moving forward, and I want to. Request. The procedure that Thompson is going to use for refinishing of this floor. Now, my experience has been with finishing the floors in my son's house, refinishing an historic house, refinishing in my own house here, and there are different ways to do it. And one way is you, you can do sanding, so I'm concerned whether how much sanding they're going to do. Another way is to do chemical and do scrubbing of the floor and removing out the finish. Also, I'm concerned about, it talks about putting screws in, so I'd like to go a complete write-up as far as how Thompson is going to do this floor. So I'm in favor of it, but I'd like to know what's going to be done.
Okay. Isaac?
I'm in favor.
Okay, no questions? Jason?
No questions.
I too have had Thompson do my floors. I think that they're incredibly professional
firm. I don't mind if they, if we hear how, but I certainly think it's a project worth doing. So do I hear a motion?
I move to carry the, carry over the balance of funds in the 2020 building maintenance outlay account and add to the 2021 building maintenance account for the purpose of refinishing the common council chambers flooring.
Seconded a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Ken. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley? Stanley?
Isaac?
He's awake.
I know.
I think he's frozen.
Uh-oh.
I think his video froze.
I can't tell.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
And Isaac, did I hear you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Next on our action item tonight are the 2021 city goals. This is the, actually, this is a quarterly report. I think this is the 2021 city goals request for action, is that right?
Correct.
It's not a quarterly report.
This is essentially, the city council essentially adopting the 2021 goals so we can start providing you a quarterly report based on what was in the strategic plan.
Okay, and I think you presented that to us in, at the December 11th or whatever, that December meeting, whatever it was. Okay, Robin, questions or comments?
No, I know.
Kathy?
No.
Eileen?
No questions.
Ken?
No questions tonight.
Isaac?
No questions.
Jason?
No questions.
And I have no questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt the 2021 City of Platteville city goals.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Jason to adopt the 2021 city goals as presented. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're done with action items tonight then, so we'll move on to information and discussion. The first item here is the inclusivity and equity update.
Yeah, so just kind of wanted to give you three brief updates on kind of things that have been continuing to go on as we ended kind of 2020 and got into 2021. So as Council President Dos indicated, you know, our goal is to have people appointed to the task force for tide at the January 26 meeting. We have four applicants that are interested so far. And again, what we're hoping to do is get committee members, whether they be, you know, with business or individuals and residents, and really what this task force is going to do is start meeting monthly and really start defining, you know, what this group is about. The hope is that this kind of, you know, entity will become an ability to hear any issues related to inclusivity, diversity and equity, work on, and obviously continually reviewing the working statement that was created earlier in 2020.
the working statement that was created earlier in 2020 and continue to kind of revise that as appropriate, but then also look at a couple of strategic initiatives that we put into place with, you know, looking at particularly doing some type of an inclusivity, diversity, and equity event that we want to do in 2022. But then also just again, continue to kind of think of, you know, ideas, trainings, and multiple, you know, opportunities that are available for inclusivity, diversity, and equity. So what we really hope to do was to get, you know, people to apply to this on their own free will so that, you know, we didn't have any, you know, favoritism that was seen if we were, you know, going to a certain organization or group and saying be on this committee. So again, please, if you can get the information out to anybody that you think would be interested, have them get in contact with us with that so we can start those committees. We obviously have a couple of staff members that are interested in being a part of that as well. And again, they're open to meetings, so it's open to anybody. So even if you're not on that committee and later on you, you see that you would be interested, you can just show up. So we'll start advertising those and moving on from there. As Ken kind of brought up, Jamie Collins is going to be doing two presentations. One, obviously, is tomorrow for staff. And then the 26th, we have a work session scheduled from 6:00 to 7:00 PM for the common council, where I will be sending out a Zoom invite for you guys that Jamie has set up for that. And again, this is going to be kind of a LGBTQ work session presentation that Jamie has done with the Southwest Rainbow Alliance. So we're definitely excited to hear that presentation and see potentially how, you know, what we can learn and then what we can obviously incorporate into the city to, to make improvements. And then the last thing, obviously, that we've kind of been working on is the bias reporting discussion. So on December 10th, we did, city staff met with Frank King from UW Platteville, as well as Mark Long with the Platteville School District, and a variety of other members from UW Platteville, to talk about kind of creating a monthly group that would get together and specifically try to report on and look at issues of inclusivity, diversity, and equity. So what we're going to be doing is looking at meeting later this month to really start kind of reviewing, you know, different things that potentially we could all partner with as far as the university, the school district, and the city, kind of reviewing some of the data that, you know, the university has, the, the school district has, and also the city, and looking at potentially, you know, if there are any incidents that are related to inclusivity, diversity, and equity between those three partners, kind of have that being a sounding board for, for the various staff and for those three entities to be able to discuss issues. So we're hopeful that that kind of continues down, you know, the long-range goal that we set about two years ago of kind of, you know, creating this inclusivity plan. This is all part of the journey, is looking at different ways that, you know, we can gain perspective and, you know, find ways to, to obviously improve all three of our entities. So that's kind of the quick update I have for that.
Anybody with questions on this inclusivity, diversity, and equity update?
I just have one question. I just have one question, Barb.
Good. Jason?
Um, the, the question that I have is, over the past week, I've been contacted by several community members, mostly community members of color, in terms of expressing concerns about some things, some recent events that have happened at the high school. And I don't know if anything has been reported or anything has been mentioned that you know of, or-
Well, Jason, I think that's exactly what the creation of the Bias Incident Reporting Group, Frank King, Max Long, and Adam's were. So I would encourage you to share that with Adam so that they can, I know at the university you have a bias incident reporting form and team, and I think that this particular thing Angela Miller was include, was a part and parcel of this at one point in time and was giving some advice. So I would encourage you to share that with Adam so that perhaps that team could be called together and that could, we, somebody could start working through that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else who has anything they want to say, wave your hand. I'm not going to go around this time. On bias, on inclusivity, diversity, and equity. Otherwise, I'm going to have Adam move on to the COVID-19 update.
All right. So just, yeah, just wanted to kind of give you, again, one of the requests was to kind of have this kind of be a standing item going forward, which makes total sense. So just wanted to give you an update. So obviously, the numbers that were in the packet were as of January 6th, so I can kind of update you as of where we are today. So as of January 12th, over the past 14 days, Grant County has averaged 16.1 new confirmed COVID-19 cases. As of 4:00 PM today, there's been 4,306 total confirmed cases of COVID-19 with 4,069 individuals recovered. There's 535 current probable cases of COVID-19 that have been reported, and the deaths, the total deaths are still at 77, and there's been five total deaths of a person who is probable for a case of COVID-19. The university's information was updated at 6 o'clock today, so they are at 11,881 total tests have been administered. They are still at the 478 student health service tests that have been confirmed as positive. 51 continue to still be external positive tests, and they are now at 39 for external positive tests of employees. So on the calls that I've been on with Grant County, one of the things they have kind of highlighted is obviously they have seen a reduction in the number of COVID-19 cases over the last kind of month. A lot have been, we think, too, obviously with the holidays and with, with the decrease in testing that has played into it. But one of the kind of, I guess, concerning trends that they've indicated is that they do continue to be concerned kind of with the percentage of positive cases being with 18 in the underage bracket, as well as the 50 and up. Over the last, on Monday's meeting, they didn't indicate that those numbers have been going down, but they still tend to be about, you know, 20% of the, between 17 and 20% of the total positive cases over the last 14 weeks have been in the 18 and under, and then the majority of everybody else has been in 50 and up. So that's something that they kind of continue to monitor. Obviously, as far as, you know, city staff, we continue to have all of our policies in place where we're requiring obviously masks to be worn, where you are not able to be in your office, kind of social distancing by yourself. We do require, you know, any patrons or visitors that come into City Hall to be continuing to wear masks as well. Our finance department, due to having some kind of high-risk individuals, has been kind of, has been permanently, you know, closed, but still is functioning. So we've done kind of a, an alternative method of being able to pay taxes, so you can do an appointment, or you can actually physically come in and drop it right into the door. So that overall has been going very well. So again, we're still following all of the guidelines where if an employee does come into close contact with somebody that has tested positive, there are procedures that they have to follow and kind of a flow chart that's being utilized. There has been a change overall in the requirements in regard into quarantining. So if after seven days you can get a test and verify that you have tested negative, you are able to return to work based on that information. And then, you know, obviously, as of December 31st, there were two provisions in regards to kind of FMLA leave that were not extended by the federal government. So that now has kind of reverted back to where the city is following its kind of normal employee handbook procedures in regards to lost time related to COVID-19. We did do some kind of added things to, to assist with that in regards to extend, allowing a one-time extension of vacation, as well as potentially some other leave options that were sent out in a memo. As Barb, kind of Dos indicated, we continue to have numerous meetings pretty much every week in regards to COVID-19, where we meet with EMS director, the police chief, fire chief. You know, I'm on various calls with the EMS director for Grant County and et cetera, and we'll continue to do those until deemed appropriate. You know, community testing has resumed and will continue to occur. So that's going on at UW Platteville's Field House from 8:00 to 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and will continue till about January 22nd, I believe, is when we heard that. And then the intention then is the Grant County will kind of be stepping in and continuing to do their full PCR testing available on Tuesdays at the county fairgrounds, and then on Fridays, they are using the Platteville Armory. And then again, also that was indicated, our kind of city emergency management team met with Brian Allen, who is heading, the EMS director, who's heading kind of the vaccination procedures for Southwest Hospital. And we basically went around the Brodsky Center and kind of strategized, you know, what potentially it would look like when the vaccination period gets to the point that it's out to the general population. Right now, in all of the conversations that I've had with kind of Grant County, as well as the hospital, is they do want to keep things currently right now in-house. So either it's occurring primarily at the fairgrounds or for the hospital that's doing the vaccination, they're doing it at the hospital itself. But we kind of came up with a, with a kind of battle plan in regards to, you know, potentially how we would, you know, have people come into the Brodsky Center, do their registration, then go through kind of a horseshoe where they would go on the other side of the Brodsky Center, get their vaccination, wait for about 15 minutes, and then be able to leave as long as they don't have any symptoms. So as we get kind of more information from, you know, the county and also from Southwest Health in regards to when that might occur, we feel we have a pretty good kind of game plan in place in regards to the parameters we do, so we're definitely prepared for that. We did get notified on a call pretty much yesterday that the intention is for police and firefighters to potentially begin vaccinations the 18th. So that'll be, they'll be setting that up through the hospital and through the county. So the majority of our police and fire will hopefully be able to get the vaccine if they choose. And then we continue to kind of work with the county as well to find out, you know, potentially when city staff will be able to, you know, be included and we're, we, the majority of us would be kind of in the 1C category. So that, you know, potentially could be in a couple of weeks, so we'll continue to kind of monitor that. And then based on that, you know, we're going to continue to, obviously, as we see, you know, our game plan is to continue to do meetings via Zoom until we kind of get further guidance from, you know, Grant County and the CDC that, you know, it makes sense to return. And realistically, what we're kind of hearing is, you know, they're hopeful that, you know, the game plan right now is if everybody kind of gets vaccinated, it's open to the general population. Sometime in June or July is when they're anticipating, you know, potentially, that could change. So again, obviously, as we continue to kind of move through COVID-19, we'll continue to update everybody, but that's kind of our intentions right now.
Okay, anybody with any questions? I, I would just add that students who live in the residence halls will be required to be tested weekly when they come back and they're urging students to come back starting this weekend, the 16th, even those classes don't- Listen to the classes start the 25th?
Um, yeah, whatever that Monday is, yeah.
Classes start the 25th, so they're urging students who live in the residence halls to return this weekend because it will be mandatory for them to be tested on a weekly basis. And then students who live off campus will be required to be tested every other week. So just so that people are knowledgeable about that, faculty and staff who are coming to campus, who are not just all virtual, will also be required to be tested at least every other week. So-
And they're just, and in terms of faculty and staff, they're also just highly encouraging faculty and staff in general to come in and get tested as well as community, community members, so.
Right, so, okay. Well, I think that's our COVID-19 update. If anybody has a question, wave. Otherwise, I think we would be ready to adjourn to closed session. Remember, you got a second link about the closed session. So we would adjourn to closed session, this meeting would close out, and then we would reconvene in a different, in a different meeting. So, do I have a motion to, and also, we don't, this would be according to state statute 1985, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data for any, of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And we're talking about city manager evaluation, and we don't expect to take any action during closed session. So do I have a motion to adjourn to closed session and then from closed session to- Eileen?
What was that?
On mute.
On mute, sorry. I would make a motion to go into closed session and to come back out of that closed session, no action will be taken and we would retire for the evening.
Adjourn, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to going to closed session per Wisconsin statute 1985, parent one, parent C, and after closed session where no action will be taken, to simply adjourn the meeting.
Right.
All right, Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.